The best place to work.
I love working here.
I feel very blessed.
I love it here.
I look forward to coming to work every day, being a part of this team.
Like a family away from home.
Where everyone feels like everybody knows their name.
A city that supports you. We see that with our benefits.
A pension, vacation days, job security.
Being able to be heard. We feel valued. We feel respected.
Lee Summit is a very progressive city.
It's growing. It's thriving.
We have this drive towards not just doing a job, but doing it with a spirit of excellence.
I had the opportunity to continue to grow regardless of 30-plus years doing this kind of work.
It's more than just dollars and cents.
We're here really to give back.
Providing a service to better a community.
To go out and serve people.
To be a part of something bigger than yourself.
If I would have known what I know now, years ago, I would have been here much sooner.
Hello, Lee Summit. I'm Jordan. Here's your flash briefing for the week of November 17th. City Council will meet for a regular session Tuesday night at 6:00 in Council Chambers in City Hall. Meetings are open to the public or watch live on the city's YouTube channel. If you can't watch, catch the recorded meeting on demand on the YouTube channel or by subscribing to the Council Debrief newsletter, which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at cityofls.net. Join us on November 19th at 2:00 PM for the ribbon cutting on the Third Street Improvements Project to celebrate the opening of Southwest Third Street to Traffic. The project was approved by voters with the passage of the 2017 Capital Improvement Sales Tax and enhances safety, improves connectivity, and creates an inviting gateway into historic downtown Lee Summit. The ceremony will take place at the intersection of Southwest Third and Southwest Jefferson. Are you a strategic communicator who loves storytelling and public engagement? The City of Lee Summit is hiring a Director of Creative Services to lead its creative team and guide communications, marketing, and branding across all platforms. Apply today at lspeople.net. And head to Green Street on November 21st as we light downtown in thousands of sparkling lights for the Mayor's Tree Lighting at 6:30 PM. This year's theme is "Where Traditions Begin." Enjoy shopping, musical performances, a visit from Santa and Mrs. Claus, and much more to get you in the holiday spirit. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
The City of Lee Summit has hundreds of traffic lights across its more than 1,000 lane miles, all managed by the City's Public Works Traffic Technicians. The work happens inside those metal boxes on the side of each intersection. Inside, technicians program a device called the controller. The controller communicates directly with each signal head via underground wires, telling each light when to turn on and off based on a program cycle. City traffic engineers designed this cycle to allow traffic to flow as efficiently as possible for that particular intersection. In order to best match current traffic patterns, they install something called a detection system. Detection systems have taken many forms over the years, from sensors in the pavement to radar boxes. But in Lee Summit, they primarily consist of cameras, which workers mount above the traffic signals. These cameras don't record video or your speed. Instead, they monitor the spaces at the front of the intersection and identify when a vehicle is present in a specific spot. Once a vehicle is identified, the detection system sends a message to the controller, which then adapts its standard cycle to best serve the cars that are present. The pedestrian button works in a similar way. When the button is pressed, the controller receives a signal, requesting that it allow that section of the pedestrian walkway to go, which it then inserts into the signal pattern. Technicians also install something called a conflict monitor. The conflict monitor is a device in which they program all the potential patterns of lights that would lead to a collision. If the other systems mistakenly trigger those patterns, the conflict monitor sends the intersection into flash, causing all lights to flash red and directing drivers to treat it like an all-way stop. City traffic technicians implement and maintain these systems so effectively, we rarely consider them. But every time we safely pass through a signal-controlled intersection, it's all thanks to their work. So the next time you're waiting at a red light, remember the delicate coordination of super-smart systems that move you through that space safely and efficiently every day.
Waterway Car Wash is coming to the streets of West Prior. It'll provide an express or full-service car wash in a convenience store on location. Waterway Car Wash will open in fall 2025. Encho and Agave is coming to Summit Fair. The restaurant features Mexican food with a made-from-scratch menu in a casual setting. Encho and Agave will open in fall 2025. Hemline's Boutique and Home has arrived downtown. The boutique offers a curated collection of clothing, specialized accessories, and trendy home goods. Shop the latest styles today. Midwest Avionics and Summit Flight Academy are building a hangar at the Lee Summit Municipal Airport. The repair station and flight school's very own hangar will open for operation in fall 2025. The joint operations facility is being built next to police headquarters. The building will house fire department administration and training teams, city emergency operations, the Traffic Operations Center, and a co-located fire and police communication center. Completion of the project is slated for spring 2026.
Officers en route. Night 14. Armed drone.
Lee Summit has lots of local destinations, but where do you start? Green Street, a vibrant community space in the heart of downtown, is where Lee Summit comes together. Its three dynamic areas have something for everyone. Green Street Market is a modern event venue and home to the downtown Lee Summit Farmers Market. Green Street Lawn is a covered performance space hosting live music, family activities, and more. Green Street Grove is a mixture of gathering spaces, an immersive playground, and bold architectural features. And all three areas host community events year-round. So the next time you set out to enjoy the city you love, remember, meet at Green Street.
I really love living in our historic downtown. I walk my dog around the shops, take her for... You know, they do pub cups at Poppy's, so you can get ice cream with a little dog biscuit in it, which is her favorite thing in the world. My neighbors, we have block parties together. I just, I really like how welcoming and how vibrant it is. It's an amazing place to live. Lee Summit's a really great community. I love living here, and I just wanted to try to find a way to give back, look out for my neighbors, for the community. I've always tried to be involved. Before serving on City Council, I used to volunteer with AFS, which is an organization that hosts foreign exchange students. So my husband and I have hosted kids from around the world and then also volunteered with local families and schools. In my professional life, I'm a paralegal. And then in my personal life, I enjoy reading, sewing. I'm a quilter. So I just finished a log cabin quilt that I'm going to send to my aunt out in DC. I can't claim any of our council accomplishments for myself. This is always a team effort. But I am really excited about the farmers market and event space that we have coming in. It's still in the design phases, but I think it's going to be a really beautiful space and it's going to really continue keeping our downtown thriving. It's been in progress for a long time, but I think that people are going to really love it when it's done. I think one of my top priorities is going to be attainable housing that, for example, I've been trying to find a place for my mom in Lee Summit. And it's really challenging finding something that really works for a retiree who doesn't have a huge budget. Just trying to make it more attainable for people, no matter where they're at in their lives, to be a part of our community. Community is what we make it. Everybody should get involved in whatever way they can, whether that's just voting, or whether it's joining a board, or a commission, or even running for office. What do they say? The world is run by those who show up. So get involved however you can and make a difference in the community.
It is great.
All right, welcome, everyone. Would you please rise for the invocation and stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Lord, we come before you tonight grateful for the chance to serve this community. You see every heart here, those who are hopeful, those who are frustrated, and those who feel unheard. Give us, as a council, the courage and clarity to lead with integrity, even when opinions differ and emotions run high. Help us remember that while we cannot give everyone exactly what they want, we can seek what is best and fair for our whole community. Grant us patience, steady words, and a spirit of respect in this room. Guide our decisions so they honor you and uplift all who call this place home. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to invite the United States of America and to the general public, which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome, everyone. Got obviously a packed agenda tonight. I'm calling to order the City of Lee Summit Regular Session number 55. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lovell.
Here.
Councilmember Funk.
Here.
Councilmember Hodges.
Here.
Councilmember Pryor.
Here.
Councilmember Shields.
Here.
Councilmember Raider.
Present.
Councilmember Carlisle.
Present.
Mayor Protem Lopez.
Here.
Mayor Baird.
Here. Okay, the first thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I have a motion to adopt the agenda by Councilmember Hodges, a second by Councilmember Funk. Any council discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Aye.
All votes are in? Nope, one more. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously. Thank you. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Council discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Aye.
All votes are in. Please record the vote. It's also unanimous. Thank you all. Next on the agenda is the Council Roundtable. These are items of general interest, things going on in the community, maybe in your district. Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a couple of great events coming up in downtown Lee Summit. The Mayor's Tree Lighting is going to be this Friday, November 21st, at Green Street for the very first time. Am I right? What is our theme this year?
"Where Traditions Begin." "Where Traditions Begin."
So I really hope everybody will come out for that. And then the Saturday after Thanksgiving, November 29th, will be Small Business Saturday. So hopefully folks will come out and support our local businesses here downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Okay, then we will move forward with the first presentation tonight. This one's some good news type of information. This is called Missouri Good Neighbor Week Awards. We have a couple of awards to give out. Mr. Dunning is going to present, but one's called the Most Engaged Neighbor Award and the Most Neighborly City Award. Mr. Dunning.
Yeah, thank you for that intro. Pinch hitting for Crystal Weber, who was a heavy lifter behind this effort. So the city, the last few years, have been participating in what we call Missouri Good Neighbor Week. This year was September 28th through the October 4th. And we had a lot of strong supporters and partners in this with Human Relations Committee... Come on, come forward. Human Relations Commission. We've got Chair Vanessa Hickman with us. So the HRC was strongly supportive of this. In addition, the Cultural Commission and the Wellness Commission were firmly behind this effort too. And so this initiative is led by the University of Missouri Extension and the Hopeful Neighbor Project. And the initiative is to encourage acts of neighboring and recognize those that do an excellent job of that and who really make a difference. So we've been blessed through our efforts, collective efforts. The city has been recognized. One of six cities in the whole state that's been recognized, and we are the most neighborly city for 2025, so this is ours to display. And I'll read you a clip. Using a comprehensive participation index that considered everything from city size and acts of neighboring to proclamations, business engagement, and community campaigns, the Missouri Good Neighbor Week program selected Lee Summit as its judges' award, Most Neighborly City for this year. So we're very proud of that and proud of the efforts that all the HRC and our commissions and our community took for us to be recognized for that award. Next, so Vanessa, you have anything to say on that?
Yes, so one of the big events that brought attention was our Table Together event, where we had several of our community council people join us. Mayor, thank you for coming. Mark, thank you, city manager. And we ate together. And so that was such a wonderful event. And I hope next year we'll be able to have more people. It shows community. Believe it or not, we need each other, and it's important for us to show a community togetherness. So thank you, guys, and it was an honor to be a part of this Good Neighbors Week.
Okay, and if that's not enough as a community to be recognized, we have a very distinguished... Hopefully they're with us. Is Stoney Jackson here this evening? We've got... All right, come on forward, Mr. Jackson. So Mr. Jackson is one of 20 Missouri residents that were honored, and he was recognized as one of the most engaged neighbors for 2025. And this highlights everyday Missourians who make a commitment to their neighborhoods, strengthen their community bonds, and creates belonging. And so Mr. Jackson, I'll read part of his recognition here. "Mr. Jackson gives tirelessly of his time and energy, especially to older and more vulnerable neighbors. From errands of yard work, he looks for ways to enlighten others' burdens. His humble spirit and willingness to serve make him a role model for what engaged neighboring is all about." And a little bit from the nominator. "He plants trees, cleans fountains, goes out of his way to help every neighbor with their yard or garden. Anything he could do in his free time, he's there to help you out, and he does it religiously." So we're honored to recognize Mr. Jackson for his recognition as one of the most engaged Missourians for Good Neighbor Weeks. And if you'd like to say anything?
I'm very honored for this recognition, for something that I love to do. I love landscaping. And what's really meaningful is the neighbors that I've got to know. They'll actually stop, take their time. I get to know them. They always say how appreciative they are, and that makes my day. I actually have some grandsons now that are actually doing yard work to help the people out also. So it's a win-win. So I appreciate it, and I'm blessed to be in a city like this and such a great community.
Mayor, if you're open to it, would you come down and we'll get a picture? And you can hold the... And that'd be a great photo op, if you don't mind.
Sure. I'll just leave this here. All right. Okay. We've got some business to get into. So we are on Agenda Item 5A. This is, we're going to close the regular session and open the public hearing in the matter of a preliminary development plan, pathways at Kensington Farms, 1231 Southwest Waterloo Drive. Petra Development is the applicant. With all those wishing to speak for this matter, including public commenters, please rise and be sworn in by the city clerk. All right, applicant, have a presentation.
All right. Thank you, guys. Right. So all right, if I keep it on this mode right here instead of full presentation mode?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, move as quickly as possible. So my name is Tyler Burks, Managing Director of Development for Petra, based out of Wichita. I'm actually here in Kansas City, so just so you guys are aware. And then thank you, guys, for being here. It's been wonderful working with the city staff as well as working with neighbors and surrounding communities as well to get a lot of feedback on this project, so it turned it into what it is today. I'll cover eight, or seven quick items on here. First, who we are as a company and the team, and then how the project fits the area. Traffic, project phasing, parking counts, stormwater, existing utilities, existing conditions, parks and promised amenities by the previous developer. And then, hot topic here, renters, current market conditions, and home values. And then lastly, what does this do for the long-term impact of Lee Summit? And then we'll open it up for Q and A. I have extra slides at the end for Q and A, so they're not a part of the presentation, just so you're aware. All right, project team, as I mentioned, Petra, based out of Wichita. We have Ty Brandon here on my team as well, and then one of our principals of the company, Thailand, here with us tonight to witness this presentation. But I wanted to dive a little bit deeper into us. Since I'm from here, I've got a lot of ties to Lee Summit. Since I'm from here, I've got a lot of ties to Lee's Summit and Kansas City as a whole. So a lot of that has to do with how we approach this project and how much time and effort that we put into it. You know, I've lived here, I've got family that lives here, they still live here. And then so we put a lot of time and effort to it, based upon those things. And then lastly, what you... Excuse me, before I move on, Petra, as a company, manages over 700 units of residential across the Midwest, over 600,000 square feet of commercial space. And we're also currently in planning and the permitting phase for over 700 units in the Kansas City metro, not including this project. So we do have a pretty robust team that's more than capable of doing a project of this magnitude. And in addition to what you see here, I mean, NSPJ, McClure, Merge Midwest, Terra Foundation, and Spencer Fain, they all have Kansas City ties. That was done by design, putting together a local team that has a local presence and understands the Lee's Summit market. And I know a lot of you guys already know where the location is, but I'll touch on it really quick and give you a quick refresher. It's on the southeast, or southwest side of County Line Road and Ward Road, flanked by North Prairie and Southwest Prior. And then, just to give you a quick visual of the site plan here, so you can keep it in your mind as we move through the project presentation here. We have detached single-family homes that are adjacent to existing detached single-family homes, attached single-family townhomes in the middle, and then on the west side here, 55-plus twin villas, done by design, again, to act as a buffer to the estate lots to the south and to the west. In addition, we're performing a land swap. We'll dive into it a little bit further as we move along with the Raypek School District and the Lee's Summit Parks Department to bring in a future park. I know a lot of you already know about the history of this project. It's been around for about 20 years now. But I wanted to point out a couple of different things here, based upon the Planning Commission meeting last time. I wanted to give you the spirit of the original project plan, based upon what we found here through the original ordinance. So it was awarded PMIC rezoning back in 2001. But the interesting part is that this sparked a citywide reclassification of zoning districts in 2001, something that was contrarian for the time, right? To add in something interesting to the area and then look at projects in a different way. Then in 2006, of course, the project started. And actually, let me back up a little bit. Part of something else that was interesting that I noticed from the information from the previous project was that during the planning and studies phase, the plan actually consisted of duplex lots and up to 919 units, right? So density was a key factor here when they originally started this, planning this project. Something to keep in mind for what we're doing today. And then construction began in 2006, but the original developer, by our estimations, and we have Google Earth viewpoints of this, only made it through about 40 of those units of over those 700 units that they originally planned. And that's from the original developer. Then 2008, council approved the assignment of the development agreement from Pulte, which is the original developer, to BAW Investments. And then they amended the project plan to, quote, "revise this based on market constraints and demand." Something to keep in mind, and also something that we took into account whenever we designed this project. And then today, we've only made it through 279 units of the original project plan, with Inspired Homes continuing on with about 40 to 50 units. We're still only about 44% of the way there from the original project plan. And I'll touch on this really quick. So PMIC zoning, it's already zoned PMIC. So PMIC allows for greater flexibility in development standards to facilitate adaptation of development, and something that's interesting here, unique conditions of a particular site. Keep that in mind. It allows for single-family, two-family, multifamily, et cetera. And again, the spirit of the project planning and zoning was to allow for flexibility in the project plan to adapt to market conditions. And then our plan honors that vision by responding to evolving market needs. And we really leaned on the Ignite Plan with the design of this project. I know, I mean, there's a lot of videos on Lee's Summit YouTube channel that really show this, but we really wanted to implement as much as we could. So there's four pillars here. Preserve what's important, enhance existing neighborhoods, strengthen connections, transform slower-developing areas. And how we do that is through, with this project plan, is roughly 30 acres, 30 combined acres of park ground and wetlands preservation, green space, and tree buffer zones, enhancing public infrastructure, adapting to market dynamics, and making market-based demand decisions, increasing population and housing around the 150 and 291 corridor for those commercial nodes over there, creating a walking trail connection from Ward over, through our project site, create greater connectivity through walking. And one of the more important things, revitalizing legacy infrastructure that's on this site, and finishing out a slower-developing neighborhood. And then lastly, one of our more important things is partnering with individuals in the city, such as Lee's Summit. Touching on the Ignite Plan a little bit further, a big piece here for the Ignite Plan is missing middle housing. It's mentioned over 100 times, missing middle housing is in the Ignite Plan, we counted it. Missing middle housing is, you know, anywhere between duplexes to something a little bit greater density that's used as a buffer between detached single-family and multifamily. So something that we implemented into this project design. And then how it integrates into the existing fabric, our design. We're using single-family lots located adjacent to existing single-family lots. Made sure that that was a key point here, is that we're not putting any density next to non-density. Attached single-family townhomes, 55-plus senior twin villas, which create housing optionality, again, which is talked about many times in the Ignite Plan. And then, looking at the project as a whole, because this project was supposed to be one whole project at one time. So when we look at the dwelling units per acre, we're at 2.71 units per acre with this project plan and the completed plan currently, which is well within the residential one category, which is what the comp plan calls for this area. And if you just look at our site plan in and of itself, we're still within that frame at 3.9 units per acre. When we first started planning with this project, we came out with something a little bit higher density to adapt to the PMIC zoning. We really used that as a guide originally, but then when we went out, we got feedback from the neighbors. We started out at 712 units just in our project site alone. And then that led us into what you see here now, is we actually went back to the drawing board. We heard loud and clear from the neighbors that the project plan was a little too dense at that time. So we reduced those amount of units by 24%, going from 712 down to 540, very close to the original project plan, but still considering all the other factors that we'll touch on here tonight. And then, again, referencing the Ignite Plan, I can't stress it enough that we really wanted to follow that plan. The Ignite Plan calls for over 17,000 units to be built here in Lee's Summit by 2040. We're at 2025, we've got a long way to go, and we're only about 3% of the way there with this project right here. Just quick on, you know, just so you guys can get a visual over here, you can see how we we put the detached single-family next to the attached single-family. We have the attached single-family townhomes in the middle here, and again, using the 55-plus twin villas as a buffer to the state lots from the south and to the east. Again, every, keeping the density in the middle away from the less dense areas, done by design. Looking at this again, from a different angle, from southwest looking northeast, we see the buffer tree zone here. Wanted to use a little reference to Coffin Stadium. So the tree buffer here is actually roughly 470 feet of tree buffer. And then that's actually greater than the distance from home plate to center field at Coffin Stadium. So it's quite large, that tree buffer is. And then we're looking from the east, looking west, at our Phase 2. This is our clubhouse with our attached single-family townhomes. And then here, you'll see rear-loaded garages with architectural design even on the rear and the sides here. And then it's unlike what you typically see from a typical townhome that's, you know, flat on all corners here. And then we're looking at the front here, so it's, the idea is to have everything rear-loaded and a little bit more of a neighborly look, with doors in the front, walking sidewalks, walking to the rest of the sidewalk, and keep it neighborly look and feel, is the overall here. Then Phase 1, it's going to be detached, single-family-for-sale product. Three and four bedroom units with two and three-car garages, 1,200 to 2,400 square feet in size, roughly priced in the 400s to 500s, fully amenitized, it will have its own amenity package. And then it's consistent with the current Kensington Farms character, if you've ever been out there. Then Phase 2, the attached, single-family townhomes, two and four-bedroom units, rear-loaded, attached two-car garages, rents from $2,000 to $3,000 a month, fully amenitized with a clubhouse, pool, and green space, full-time onsite management, very important to note there. Hard siding, and then one of the more important things here, these are not entry-level apartments. Just keep that in mind. And then Phase 3, 55-plus senior twin villa community, two-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, 1,200 to 1,400 square feet, rents from $2,500 to $3,500 a month projected. Again, fully amenitized, it's going to have its own amenity package as well, clubhouse, pool, green space, full-time onsite management, again, hard siding, maintenance provided, and of course, a much-needed housing product for the City of Lee's Summit, again, per the Ignite Plan. And then on to phasing, and then traffic flow here, just want to touch on this really quick. So we've got Phase 1 with the detached, single-family in the indigo color here, projected to start Q2 2026, so here pretty soon. And then Phase 2, starting about a year later, Q2 2027. And then Phase 3, Q2 2028. So we're just having an optimistic one-year start time for each phase, making sure that each phase starts at a good timely manner. And then what you see here in the green bubble or the five access points, consistent with the original plan. You've got one here on Blackwell and Ward, two along County Line Road that are existing, and then number five will be the new one, once the park and the school district comes in. And then access number four will bring that down from Cornwall over to Prairie Lane. Just touching on the traffic here, I know that that's something that's been brought up in the Planning Commission meeting. So what our traffic engineers did, they took our project plan and compared it to the original project plan. And then what you'll see here is we have a modest increase of trips overall, to make, something to make note of. But the main factor here is the AM and peak hours. Actually, in the AM, we actually have a reduction in AM peak hours of traffic compared to the original traffic plan, and then a modest increase, if not level, on the PM there. And the reason why is because the 55-plus just doesn't generate nearly as much traffic as detached, single-family. Just real quick, touching on parking, I know that's important here. We have various parking stalls throughout the entire community, more than enough parking. We're actually 36% over the required amount, by over 1,600 stalls in total. And then the required is a little over 1,000, so plenty of parking there. Probably the most, one of the most important parts of the project here, there's existing infrastructure on this project. So we need to look at this, you know, not just a residential project, but it's also an infrastructure project when you look at this type of work that we have to do. There's over three miles worth of pipe that we'll have to remove just to get the project down to baseline. Same thing with over 100 structures associated with that pipe. And again, look at this as an infrastructure project, not just a residential project. Here's the heat map here, so you can see how over time, after the project was mass-grated 20 years ago, nothing was maintained. And then so you can see here in the dark blue where the water is running off in various places. And you can see how it's veining through where it's caused corrosiveness, and it's causing issues with the current stormwater plan. So our plan is to, of course, fix this on the stormwater, this stormwater, and then Phase 3 will have an additional stormwater. On that note, we actually met with Rain Tree Lake many times, and we actually did get a letter of support for this project, because this is just as important for us to fix this infrastructure as it is to everybody else in the community. Existing conditions, so what you see here is looking from the northwest, looking down to the southeast. What you see here was mass-grated at one point, now it's an overgrown site that, you know, is not what it's supposed to be. And then looking from the east, looking west, again, infrastructure here. So this is roughly a three-acre pond that we're going to have to fix during Phase, before Phase 2 even begins. As you can see here, it is loaded with water, loaded with algae, it's not supposed to be doing that. Moving on here, this is also something that's not, that wasn't a part of the original plan, but we're going to have to fix. So this is a massive dirt mound that's been dumped upon, you know, by other developers and builders around the area. It's roughly three acres in volume, and three acres in size, and 45,000 cubic yards of dirt here that's been piled upon site that we have to clear out before we can do anything. For reference here, you can see the forerunner in the homes in the background, I mean, it's quite large. And then, one of the main things that we caught wind of, or not wind of, but just notice of from the Planning Commission here last time, was that the original developer had created expectations of what the project is or what it was going to be. Now, a lot of those expectations obviously weren't fulfilled. There were other builders that mentioned, real estate agents, whenever they stole these homes, they said that nothing would ever be built here. Again, obviously, a lot of that hasn't come to fruition, and some of that was even false, right? Because as an agent, you can't say that something's not going to be built when it may have, right? So but we're here to fulfill that, is what we're here to do, right? First and foremost, we're going to start with the land swap with the public park and the Raypek School District. We did also get another letter from the Raypek School District in non-opposition of the project, so they're in favor. And then improvements along County Line Road with the walking trail. Again, public infrastructure, carry on the original Prairie and Prior connections. And then I've had many conversations with Mr. Elliott, he's here tonight. We even had another conversation about his driveway connection. We're going to continue to work with him and some of the other neighbors to make sure that his connection is where that it needs to be. And number five, the most important part, complete the community. Hot topic here, many of the feedback that we've gotten were, you know, renters aren't supposed to be next to detached, single-family homes. So essentially, who we're looking at bringing in this area, they're local professionals and families, likely in the healthcare, education, tech, first responders, and logistic industries, you name it, and people who just want to live in Lee's Summit and enjoy the Lee's Summit amenities. Rental housing provides flexibility and recruitment for incoming talent for employers, credit-worthy market rate renters who may be in a life transition. They probably got a new job, they might be in a divorce, they might be downsizing, et cetera, you name it. There might be a number of reasons why they would want to rent. In addition to, the barrier to entry to homeownership is probably the worst that it's ever been. We all know the news articles as of late, and it's only, you know, not getting any better. And then, of course, the maintenance risk, right? So we're only an HVAC, a roof, roof, or appliance away from having a $5,000 to $20,000 unexpected bill. And then renting just gives folks, you know, fixed costs, right? They know what they're going to be spending a month, they're good with that. And of course, it allows them with the mobility to be able to move throughout the community as they wish. Aside from the existing conditions and the challenges with that, a big challenge in today's market is the market itself, right? So we actually went down and actually did a study using the MLS, the Heartland MLS, and pulled data with Kensington Farms and Stony Creek to the north. And then we pulled sold home values from 2006 all the way down to 2025, what you see here today. And in a nutshell, basically, everything has gone up almost double. Home price, the down payment, the cost of repairs, the yearly maintenance, and then the construction of a home has gone up. Lee's Summit's not too dissimilar than that of the national average. And then so that's caused the strain on a lot of homebuyers, right? And then so this is also another reason why that we chose to design the project the way that we did, because again, just as the original developer called out, we're adapting to market conditions. Can't stress that enough. Market conditions are very important for all of this. And then another thing to look at here, so we actually looked at the original project as-is, right? Because we wouldn't actually have to be here tonight. We'd probably see us out here already moving dirt, because they said we could have just picked up the project and gone with it. I would have loved to have done that. But the problem is, is when you look at a project of this magnitude, 500-plus units, they would have to be in the $600,000 to $700,000 range on average, right? Some of those would actually have to creep up higher than that. In order to counteract the cost of the infrastructure, as, you know, as well as dealing with the absorption rate of homeownership, of home purchases. Not to mention, again, per the Ignite Plan, this price range only serves 3% of the Lee's Summit population. The price points that we're looking at now serve greater than that, roughly 70%. So we're actually serving the greater community versus just a small percentage as a whole. And then, I mean, these are national headlines here. Housing supply is undersupplied here in Lee's Summit as well. And then something that just came out last week is that the median first-time homebuyer age is now 40 years old. Again, a strain in the market, we have to adapt to it, which is why we have to put rental product in there. And then the home value stats, right? So we've heard a lot of feedback that as soon as you put renters next to a detached, single-family home, it's going to lower the home value. Again, using the local MLS, did my own study, actually worked with some other agents on this as well, and actually pulled many neighborhoods here in Lee's Summit, as an example, that are built with detached, single-family homes, right next to rental units. And you can see them right here, I listed them out. And I started with the home values five years prior to the rental homes, whether... And I started with the home values five years prior to the rental homes, whether it be townhomes or multifamily, and the five years post that. And you see the numbers are astounding, especially on Arbor Walk here, is what you look here, is that many times, actually, almost every time, the home values have gone up. So there's not one case that I could find that, on the average and on the median, have the home values gone down. And then so I was curious, is why I did this, so I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure that this was actually a thing, and it's, fortunately, it's not, not a thing. And lastly, I just want to leave you guys with one note, I'll finish up here, I'll just read this verbatim. "Stepping back, the question is really this: How does this project shape Lee Summit for the long term? Improving pathways at Kensington Farms turns a slow-developing piece of ground into a finished neighborhood, delivers real lasting benefits, a range of housing choices that can adapt to changing market conditions, a walkable, park-connected community that aligns with the IGNITE comprehensive plan, and modern infrastructure that fixes problems not only in the immediate neighborhood but in the surroundings, surrounding areas as well. It brings new customers to nearby businesses, grows the local tax base, strengthens our ability to recruit new employers who need nearby housing options for their employees, helps residents stay close to one another as life changes, and creates a thoughtful transition and buffers that respect the neighbors who are, who already live here. And then 20 years from now, we want to be able to point to this project and say, this is where Lee Summit showed how to welcome growth, protect what we value, and adapt to the future demands." Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Usually, we have the staff do the presentation, and then we do questions.
Hector Soto Jr., Senior Planner. I'd like to enter to the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 20.
Please enter into the record Exhibit A, 1 through 20.
The application before you tonight is for the continued development of the existing Kensington Farm area. So it consists of approximately 113 acres, and the applicant is proposing a total of 540 dwelling units to be divided out into three different phases. Each of the three different phases represents three different housing typologies that are depicted here in the culture-coded map. Here on the, I'll move from east to west, so as you can see, kind of the ghosted or half-toned area. The existing Kensington Farm development currently exists, we'll call along the periphery of the eastern half of the property, bleeds over a little bit onto the western part, but it's primarily along the periphery of that eastern portion. So here's some of that area that makes up the west.
Mr. Soto, would you speak into that microphone a little bit better for us?
So on this, on the east side, we have the area that's single-family in nature, depicted here in the asterisk color, in that there are 235 single-family dwelling units. The configuration and lot sizes for that area are consistent with the nature and the morphology that you see of the lots that make up the existing development along that eastern boundary. As you continue to move your way west, you've got the sundrop color in the middle that consists of three-unit attached and six-unit attached townhomes, and that consists of, that makes up Phase Two. And then the westernmost primrose area is, consists of 128 total dwelling units, consisting of 64 duplex units. Now, the applicant, in past meetings and in communication with staff, has indicated that the target market for Phase Three is going to be more senior living facilities or senior living duplexes, but there's nothing in the plan as proposed that would tie the ownership to, or rental aspect of it to seniors. From the zoning perspective, you're just looking at the land use, which we would just look at it as duplex. Doesn't matter who occupies it, it's duplex. As you can see here, the area is already zoned PMICs, obtained that PMIC zoning back in 2005 with that original Kensington Farm development that was proposed by Pulte back in, like I said, about 2005. The comprehensive plan shows that area, the recommended land use area, as low-density residential, which is primarily supposed to be composed of a single-family, low-density residential. The proposed plan, as was previously mentioned, about half of it is, is single-family in nature that's still reflective of that existing development along that eastern boundary. So as, looking at the property, the entire 320 acres of what was originally Kensington Farms' boundary, the proposed development would still be consistent with that lower-density residential character, even though you do have some of those pockets in the middle and on the westernmost boundary that do have slightly more dense development on them. Previously alluded to by the applicant, this proposed plan does touch on a number of goals and objectives outlined in the IGNITE comprehensive plan, as well as the Community for All Ages Plan. The Community for All Ages Plan does reference to improved connectivity, to provide improved transportation mobility goals to the area, and with this plan, there will be some extension of shared-use path, 10-foot-wide shared-use path along the County Line Road of the development between Prairie Lane on the west and Ward Road on the east. Strong neighborhoods, a portion of our IGNITE plan, mentioned many times the need and encouragement of a variety of housing types to encourage and provide prospective property owners or just tenants to give them greater options of housing typologies to, that appeal to their different sensibilities and preferences. The missing middle here, graphic here just depicts what, what that missing middle is, which can be anything from, from triple-stack, low-rise, multifamily to small-lot, single-family, and the proposed development falls within the range of what's considered missing-middle housing typologies. So here's this original plan from, from 2005. The original plan called for a total of 735 dwelling units, and if you were to look at the proposed plan now and looking at the entire boundaries of Kensington Farms as a whole, you're looking at an increase of about 131 or so total dwelling units spread across that, the 320 acres or so. So the original density for Kensington Farm was around 2.2, and when accounting for the proposed development and incorporate plug it in into the existing boundaries of what's already developed, across the same acreage as was originally proposed by Pulte, you'd be looking at about 864 dwelling units. Your density overall goes, like I said, from 2.2 to about 2.7, which represents about a 22% increase in density, but overall, is still about half of what would be allowed as a maximum density in standard, single-family residential zoning. Here you have some elevations from 2005 on the, on the left, and some updated elevations from 2014 that reflected just some changes in preferences and architectural styles that were prevalent in 2014, what kind of evolved over the previous 11 years. And the proposed, the applicant is proposing architectural styles that would be similar, would be in a similar vein to what was previously approved in 2014 and that you already see in that subdivision. Here, this graphic again, just kind of illustrates some of what was previously mentioned. Now, if you were to just look specifically at the 115 or 13 acres that the applicant is looking at, and he mentioned in his presentation, the, the area density is at 3.9, but again, when spread across the entire original acreage, that brings it down to about 2.7. This image here, just to illustrate some of the road improvements that are going to be associated with, with the proposed development, there's, the road improvements are going to occur over three phases that are consistent with the development of the three different housing areas. Phase One is going to require the extension of a 10-foot-wide shared-use path from Ward Road on the west to the midpoint, I believe that's Cornwall, I believe in the midpoint there along the County Line Road. Second phase of the townhome portion, second phase is going to trigger the realignment of Prairie Lane to line up with Prior Road, and it's also going to trigger some, a number of turn lane improvements there at that, at that intersection. The third and final phase would then close out or finish up the shared-use path extension from this midpoint out to Prairie, to Prairie Lane. To provide some buffering, here you can see on the, on the plan that along the periphery of the, the townhome areas that there is actually a fair amount of, extensive amount of landscaping actually, to provide some of that visual and physical buffering from the single-family residential that's being proposed as part of Phase One. And then along the south area of the, the senior living duplex area, where it backs up to some large lot acreage estates outside of the city limits in Cass County, there'd be the retention of an existing tree line with some supplemental landscaping to, to fill in some of those thinner areas. So traditionally, some of the things that we've come across from a parking perspective in terms of areas of concern have been just the availability of sufficient parking in the townhome area, and what is recommended as part of this development plan is that due to the proliferation of number of curb cuts along each of the streets that are serving the, the townhome area, it reduces the amount of available on-street parking areas. So what the applicant is doing, that each of these starred areas, there are some additional overflow and guest parking pods that are distributed pretty evenly throughout the whole townhome area. So in addition to that, each of the individual townhomes will also have a double car, a two-car garage, so each will have its own two enclosed spaces, and will be served by a driveway that is also two vehicles wide. So each individual dwelling unit will already be able to accommodate four off-street parking spaces, plus the availability to use these, these on-street parking pods. The applicant is similarly looking to do the same thing with, with the senior, the senior duplexes in, in Phase Three. So here are some snapshots of some of the elevations that are, again, that are pretty consistent and complimentary to the existing type of architecture that you see along the single-family area of the existing single, existing Kensington Farm development. Here'd be the townhome elevations, and finally, you've got the duplex elevations, and similarly, you'd be able, you'd be able to provide enough off-street parking there to satisfy the demand, the expected demand of parking for each of those three development phases. So two neighborhood meetings were held earlier, earlier this year, and you can see here some of the concerns, which I'm sure you'll hear tonight and were expressed at the Planning Commission, were just more, how does this project fit in with the, the promise context, and just overall development promises of the original desire by Pulte Homes to develop the area, and how this fits in with the zoning comprehensive plan, and whether or not adequate infrastructure is available to, to provide the needed services for the development. So one of the, I guess, part of this is also just for edification of the, of the audience. So we received over 380 protest petitions on this application, and in doing so, the goal of the petitioners would be that if a certain threshold is reached of the ownership of the property within a certain buffer, 185 feet of the project boundaries, the petitioners as part of the protest petition process are hoping to then trigger a minimum six-vote approval at the city council level to actually approve the project as opposed to just a simple majority of five votes. Staff has taken in all of those protest petitions, mapped them out, and determined that the, that the percentage of protest petitioners represent about, slightly under 20% of, of the area. So it is not sufficient to trigger the 30%, to cross that 30% threshold. So as this body moves forward in their decision-making process, should there be a motion to approve it, second ordinance reading, which would give final action on the project, at this point, only requires a minimum of five votes. As was mentioned earlier by the applicant, and just, and you're already well aware of this, but for those in the audience that may, may not be aware of this, the project came before the Planning Commission on October 23rd, and the motion that was made and passed was for recommendation of denial. That motion passed by, by a vote of six to one. So with that, I will just indicate that there are four conditions of approval that you see before you, and we'll yield to any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, I'm opening up the council for questions, for the staff, for our staff, or the applicant. Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is currently under an approved plan, but they want to amend that? Do I understand that right? Like, they, they could go ahead and build according to the existing plan that's out there?
Yes, there is already an existing plan out there of which the developer or some other party could build off that existing plan. This application before you would supersede the, the plan for the remaining 113 acres.
Okay. And, you know, the, the applicant mentioned some, some senior, I don't know if they said specifically 55-plus. Do you plan to have specific age-restrictive covenants, or will this just be kind of marketed towards a more senior product?
It'll be marketed for 55-plus.
Okay, but, but no covenants, so if somebody who's 40 just really liked the townhome lifestyle, I could?
Yeah, yeah, of course.
I'm not moving, just, just curious how that works.
Yeah, no worries.
This is probably a question for staff, but what we're voting on tonight, if we move forward with this, is just this layout, like, it's not about whether you, the ownership structure, like whether they're rented or owned or senior or not, it's just, do we approve this layout with this density and, and that kind of overall design?
Correct. So zoning is really just going to look at the land use of the property, so how it's used, not tendency of, of the property. So be it rental, owner-occupied, from a zoning perspective, it's the material, the use is the use, so single-family, townhome, duplex.
Right, so we understand kind of what their, what their plan is, but it's up to them whether they want, the owner could rent a home, sell a home.
Correct. I mean, there may be other mechanisms, mechanisms by which, as you mentioned, covenants and other things, that, by which tendency could be addressed, but from a zoning perspective and with this application before you?
Right, they can put their own private covenants in place, but that's not what we're voting on tonight.
Correct.
Okay. We talked, there was a lot about infrastructure improvements. What, so it sounds to me like the, the improvements that would kind of be of a more public nature, benefiting the greater community, are things like the street connections, trail connections, drainage improvements, is there anything else that, like, I understand they'll have to put in their own water and sewer lines to serve the houses that are being built, is there anything else that really benefits the community as a whole?
No, like I mentioned, I mean, there, there is the land swap, so, I mean, ultimately, future development will, will yield, you know, park property and, and the school, but that's outside the scope of this application, that'd be provided by, by those entities.
If this all goes through, it may also provide the ability to build future parks and schools, but that's not part of what they're talking about, specific land.
Correct.
You know, this, this project had stalled out before, so is there any real guarantee of completing those public improvements? Or is it, will be, like, as they complete a phase, they also have to complete certain trails, or what, how do we know that this all gets done?
So, yeah, so some of those, those road improvements would be tied to the development of the specific phases, but beyond that, this, this project would be no different than any other project where you do tie certain improvements to development, and ultimately, the market's going to dictate whether, how and when those, those phases actually build out.
But like, if they, if they built all three phases, it would be a requirement to also build those trails and things that they're talking about?
Correct, yes.
They would have occupancy permits for all of those?
Yes.
Okay. There was a mention of revitalized infrastructure, what, I'm just not sure what that means. Is that about the drainage that needs to get fixed, or?
Sure. So there were certain, there were certain, there were certain infrastructure improvements that were made early on by, by Pulte, understandably so with the assumption that they would be able to continue to develop under the conditions that they originally proposed. But as we're well aware, that stalled out. So there was, there's certain infrastructure that exists out there that just, just has lain dormant and has, for lack of a better term, just kind of decayed, so that any, any deficiencies would have to be addressed by the developer. So that, any deficiencies would have to be addressed by the developer for the continued development of the project, as you see before you.
Okay. Does staff agree with the assessment about the drains, that that'll improve conditions for Rain Tree Lake, or at least not make them worse going forward?
Yes, I mean, any more specific questions, I'll have to refer to other staff, but yes, we're satisfied that the proposed improvements will satisfy the infrastructure needs for the development.
Okay. I guess, maybe this is for another staff, but the drains plan that they're proposing, will that actually decrease runoff compared to current status quo? Like, in terms of silt and sediment getting into waterways?
Decrease it? I'll let Sue Piles answer.
I know it's not going to clean it up, but like, will it slow the rate of that happening?
Hi, Sue Piles, Development Engineering Manager. Right now, it's a lot of just dirt that's flowing down through that area. Once the project constructs the improvements, then it's gonna, the runoff's gonna be captured in the stormwater system, in the pipes, and be much cleaner, the water that's going to go through those detention basins is going to be cleaner. There'll be erosion control used during the construction of everything to capture the runoff before it happens. So ultimately, with build-out, the water that leaves the site should be much cleaner than is, that is leaving the site right now.
Okay, yeah, that's what I wanted to know, thank you. This is in, this is south of the county line, so it's in Raypack Schools, right? That's why they were mentioning a letter of non-opposition? Is it, I think R7 does the same thing, where they don't necessarily support a project, but they don't go out and oppose it, that's what you're referring to? Okay. Okay, just one more question. When we talked about traffic, so I think there's a couple of different baselines, right? You have the actual traffic right now, you have, if they were to build according to the currently approved plan, what it would look like, and then you have an alternate if they built according to this plan that they're proposing. So if they build according to this plan they're proposing, it'd be more traffic than it is right now, because it's more houses, right?
Sure, correct.
But less than if they did according to what they're currently allowed to build to?
Correct.
Okay, did I have that right?
Yes.
I think those are all of my questions, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Rader.
Thank you, Mayor. My questions are very simple, and I think for the applicant. Why is the pipe being removed? You mentioned there's a pipe being removed.
Yeah, so there, as Hector mentioned earlier, that 20 years ago, Polte put in, you know, 18, well, actually more than 18,000 linear feet of pipe, and much of that, 18,000, has been unaccepted by the city. So it's actually not in operation currently, it's just out there, laying dormant.
That's great. And then, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to something that you said. You were talking about costing 600 to 700,000 to build, and you kind of lost me there, because you were going through the different things.
Sorry, there's a lot of.
Which one were you referring, which part, which phase, or which buildings were you referring to?
Yeah, so the idea with that is if we picked up the original plan as-is, and we modeled it out, as in, we have to cover all of that infrastructure work that we just mentioned earlier, the price points of those homes, out of the entirety of that project with the remaining 500 or so that would need to be built out, would have to be at least in the 600s to 700s from a value perspective. Now, that's an awesome thing to have for Lee Summit, but the problem is, is that the amount of time that that would take to absorb, because we're serving the least amount of residents that fit within that category, and then also the cost of homeownership, as everyone knows here today, that it's gone up. So to do something at that magnitude, at this magnitude, and cover all those infrastructure costs, it would be probably a 15- to 20-year timeframe to get it done. It's really hard to bring in investment at a 15- to 20-year timeframe. So that's one of the big reasons why.
So you're saying overall, so you, in your presentation, you said that that first phase was, for sale units, were going to be 400 to 500,000. But then what you're saying is if it's not passed as a for-sale in the first phase, and then rentals in the back?
Correct.
Then you're talking about that it would be 600 to 700,000 to build those ones in the front, the phase one?
Not to build, but to sell.
I mean, to sell.
Yeah, so how it is now, just to kind of give you a little insight of like, the financial economics of how it works, is that, one, is the density, right? So we are increasing density, I'm well aware of that. And then, so that density obviously pays for infrastructure. I mean, the more houses that you have on one piece of road, the more tax base that's going to it, and it pays for that road, correct? And then, so if you pick up that original plan, while we do have a lot of similarities on our Phase One with the lot sizing as the original plan, there are other lots that are a little bit larger. And then, so that actually decreases the overall density from that standpoint. And then, so now, you're just getting a lot less revenue from that as a whole to be able to cover that. So the way that we mapped it out is say, okay, Phase One, let's put it in as much as we can with what makes sense for today's market, and then as Phase Two and Phase Three come in, we have those as rental units. And one of the reasons why, as I mentioned earlier, is absorption. It's so much faster, as everybody knows, to lease something out, it takes a few days or a week, versus a home, it takes, you know, anywhere between 30 to 45 to 60 days to close on a home, right? So, sorry, you start adding that up over time, and then you start thinking about, okay, this is going to take a really long time to build this thing out, and then there's all of the upfront costs just to cover those public infrastructures, the stormwater, the existing stormwater and that massive dirt pile that's out there, that's 45,000 cubic yards. It just really eats up into the ability to do what the original plan was.
I think that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Funk.
Thank you, Mayor. While you're up there, while we have the applicant up there, so the three different phases, are they going to be three different HOAs where they're not going to?
Correct.
Combine and join? What about with the current stock of housing that's there? Is the single-family going to come together with the other housing that's already there?
So there could be capabilities, I've had several conversations with the neighbors on this, two at the two neighborhood meetings, and then a couple of individual calls with some folks, and we talked about it. And essentially, we looked at it originally to say, hey, let's merge the two together. Because at a first glance, that makes a lot of sense, right? But when you start looking, and I won't get too deep into the details, because I'll start opening up a lot of other things, but there's a bonding district that was created for that infrastructure. Well, on our land, that bonding district has been satisfied. And then, in the existing HOA, it's not been satisfied. So that's one reason, right? Because there's existing bonds out there that the current HOA has to pay for. And then, two, just kind of the governance of the HOA, managing a new construction project with this many units going in, it's a lot easier to just go ahead and focus on governing what's currently being built, and then have the capabilities that later on, whenever this Phase One is built, the residents then can form, you know, a coalition of the two. So we're not restricting the capabilities of merging the two, it's saying, hey, let us focus on our work now with, and let us govern what we can govern right now, and then we'll let the rest dictate how it wants to dictate.
So on the 55, I mean, in your presentation, you said this is going to be a 55 and older community, and then you just said, maybe not.
No.
So would you, I think my concerns is, is I think, I applaud you in the townhomes and duplexes, even though they're for rent, of accompanying the additional parking that we see a problem with a lot of times, but moving over to that third phase, you really don't have, or I'm not seeing, this is pretty small, but I'm not seeing any additional parking if you're not going to tie this to a 55 and older community.
Yeah, there's, give me a moment. Where's the PowerPoint here? There we go. So we work with staff on this, and we have addressed this. And then, so as Hector mentioned before, so the 55-plus, each unit is going to have a two-car attached garage, in addition to a driveway that's going to allow for the capacity of at least two cars. And then, in addition, throughout the entire community, there are parking stalls throughout, but this is active 55-plus, right? It's not, it's not a, you know, senior care facility or anything like that, where you need a massive parking lot, it's 55-plus, right? So it's a little bit different of a demographic than what the initial thought is for senior living, right? So there's more than enough parking for each one of those units there.
So would you, there's a lot more to this presentation we're going to hear later. Would you tie this to a 55-plus community?
As far as the Phase Two, or just the Phase Three?
Phase Three, as you alluded to in your presentation, it was going to be 55-plus, but you just said maybe it might not be?
Not that it maybe not be, just that we're marketing to that, right? So then, you just, you just don't put covenants on there, you know, per, you know, record or anything like that. But from a marketing perspective, here's a little thing on the inside for how we look at things, it does not make sense for us to flood the market of one product type. So having Phase Two and Phase Three be the same and target the same demographic, again, we're talking about absorption, it does not make sense to have those two market to the same type of folks, right? So then you create the 55-plus as a marketing perspective, but then obviously a target for who you're renting to in that, right? So then they don't compete against each other, right? So then it allows for speed to market.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlisle.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of questions that didn't get answered in those people before me, and they're for you, so.
Cool.
So with your, the 55-plus, and then your other duplexes, triplexes?
Tunnels, yeah.
All of that, yeah. You said that you're going to have onsite management, 24-hour management there, right?
Probably business hour type of management, but yeah, and then.
Does that go for maintenance as well?
Yeah, there'll be maintenance staff as well.
So for any maintenance issues they have, they'll be able to?
Correct, yeah.
It's not going to be, we're waiting on somebody to kind of?
Yeah, there's likely, you know, like a hotline or some sort of online opportunity for the residents to be able to call in maintenance.
And then, also, they're not going to mow this themselves, or plow it for snow?
No, it'll be.
Put down salt, or any of that stuff, right?
Yeah, the onsite management will take care of that on a weekly basis.
And then they'll also maintain all of the trees and flowers and whatnot, so we don't have to worry about old trees out there falling over?
That's correct.
If they are not alive, you're going to take them out and replace them?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, I just wanted to ask one more follow-up on the 55-plus question.
Sure.
So, just, you know, you have two paralegals on the dais here, so we're, we know just enough law to be annoying.
That's all right, ask them away.
Part of the reason why you wouldn't put specific restrictions on here is that even if you're marketing towards a 55-plus demographic, if you had someone who was 54 and wanted to live in here, you wouldn't want to turn them away or have to evict them, or if somebody had a younger spouse or family member, someone that wanted to live with them for a period of time, you want to have some flexibility, even if that's kind of what you're focused on.
Absolutely.
And so is that kind of why you would?
Yeah.
I don't know if you're open to that conversation, but why your instinct would be to maybe not put specific restrictions on there?
Yeah, just that, I mean, because, I mean, use that as an example, I mean, there's plenty of other examples, too, where they're, hey, you know, lease-up, worst-case scenario, lease-up's not going the way that it should for 55-plus, now we can open it up to say, okay, let's start marketing to 40-year-olds, or something like that, right? So then start, allow for the flexibility for the product to have success, versus being restricted to a covenant that doesn't allow you to do really much of anything after that, in those types of scenarios. Because at the end of the day, we want this thing to absorb and actually complete the way that it should have been completed 20 years ago.
Okay, thank you, that's all I had, Mayor, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Funk.
Thank you, Mayor, sorry, I have one more question.
Sure.
On the single-family, in those HOA terms, those are going to be for sale, no rentals?
Correct.
Okay, and that will be part of the HOA, no rentals?
We won't put that in there, because if somebody, as an individual, you know, they purchase a home, it won't be too dissimilar to the current HOA, right? And the current HOA, I actually read it a little bit this morning, it says, no one person is allowed to have more than three units at one given time in the community. So we'll adopt, you know, similar covenants and restrictions like that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Other questions for staff or the applicant? All right, then, at this point, we will go to the public comments portion of the meeting. There's quite a few up here that have been handed. Let me start off, though, by just letting everybody know that I watched the Planning Commission meeting, it was a three-hour public hearing. The Planning Commission did a thorough job, as they usually do, vetting this development. The public commenters did a good job of stating their concerns. I do need the public commenters tonight to speak to the applicable issues and concerns regarding this development. It's coming before, this is the City of Lee Summit, so we work with the counties as collaboratively as we can, Jackson County, Cass County, but we're not addressing issues with, you know, the county this evening. We also have really strong relationships with the schools, we have many schools in our city boundaries, but we respect their jurisdictions. The U.S. Postal Service is not under our City of Lee Summit purview, so we don't have any authority over them. And with regard to the HOA, you know, we work well with the HOAs in our communities, but individuals that have issues with HOAs, those are typically private matters. So the council is fully aware, and this is important, we know that it lost, or got denied 6-1 by the Planning Commission, and all the Planning Commission public commenters, they're on record, so that's, they're all on the record. So this is an opportunity tonight to add any relevant points that you'd like to make in addition to those comments. Each commenter gets three minutes, that is all, no more. My job is to conduct a fair public hearing and to provide for a civil decorum, and to do so, I need the commenters to speak to the issues of the application. This application is a preliminary development plan. So the public comments are not for making disparaging comments about an individual or a group of people. Half of our citizens do rent, 108,000 people, over 50,000 people either rent a house, single-family or duplex, or whatever. So we do understand that the more people there are in a community, the more crime you're going to have. We do understand that, and we also understand that the more traffic you have, the more potential there is for a traffic accident. So those are given, and we do understand that portion. We do try to, as a city, we built a 150 highway, we built a police substation to try to address public safety on the south side where all the growth is occurring. We do try to have developers build roads, so those are, you know, improvement lanes and, or turn lanes and more. So those are all relevant discussion points, and that's where we need to focus tonight. So with that said, I'll just go in the order that my assistant city clerk gave me these. If you haven't signed one of these, you can still, you can still comment, but let's try to not repeat the exact same comments, person after person, with regard to the issues. So Ms. Ashley Cullen, would you like to go first?
All right, good evening. My name's Ashley Cullen, and I live in Kensington Farms, directly adjacent to the proposed development site. I'm speaking today in strong opposition to this project, because it simply does not belong in a single-family home subdivision. First, our neighborhood was designed as a low-density, single-family community, quiet streets, open yards, and a sense of space and safety that families value. Inserting a high-density development here fundamentally changes that. It brings a level of density, noise, and activity that conflicts with the established design, and it undermines the principle of single-family home subdivision that we all have invested in. Secondly, a multi-story structure next to one- and two-story homes directly improves on privacy, the visual scale will shift. Property owners should not be forced into a changed environment simply because the adjacent parcel is used in a dramatically different way. What we lose is not just the view, it's quality of life. Thirdly, the impact on traffic and parking will be significant. Our streets were never designed to accommodate the volume of vehicles a multi-unit project would bring. The risk is increased congestion, less safe pedestrian crossings for our children, and overflow parking that will inevitably spill into our driveways and curbs, creating additional safety hazards. Next, the presence of a large dense complex among single-family homes can and will diminish property values. Potential buyers look for stability, consistency, and neighborhood character, not a mix of incompatible uses. This development could undermine years of homeowner investment. Lastly, and with two young children, most importantly, numerous planning Potential buyers look for stability, consistency, and neighborhood character, not a mix of incompatible uses. This development could undermine years of homeowner investment. Lastly, and with two young children, most importantly, numerous planning and criminology studies have shown that high-density developments like this one often bring higher rates of property crime, more vehicle break-ins, thefts, and vandalism, murder like we've already seen at Osageon prior, and shootings like the police officer that was shot near the residences at Echelon, both within five miles of our homes. Simply because of the increased population density and frequent turnover. They erode neighborhood safety by reducing the familiarity and watchfulness that naturally exists in single-family areas. When residents no longer know their neighbors, accountability and vigilance decline. What we are asking for is consistency, fairness, and respect for longtime residents. The zoning subdivision plan and community expectations all pointed towards low-density or, uh, single-family use. We are not anti-growth, we are for responsible, context-appropriate development, and this project as proposed is out of scale and out of place and unsafe for our single-family community. I urge the council to deny this proposal to maintain the safety, character, and quality of life that define Kensington Farms. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna struggle with some of the names tonight. Debbie Canstiner?
Yep. Hello. Good evening, my name is Debbie Canstiner, and I've lived in Kensington Farms for the past 14 years. I'm here on behalf of myself and my neighbors to respectfully ask you to deny the application for pathways at Kensington Farms as it currently stands. When we built our home in this neighborhood, it felt like a throwback to a peaceful 1990s style community. Detached, single-family homes, children playing outside, neighbors waving as cars pass, nature woven throughout, it's a true suburban country feel. That vision was consistent with how the area was marketed, how homes were sold, and how we have lived since. Now we're being asked to accept something quite different, multi-unit forms, town homes, threeplexes, and commercial real estate sixplexes, and two separate HOAs within the same subdivision, voiding the sense of cohesion this neighborhood was built on. These changes violate promise made via our community's marketing and our recorded CCRs that specified single-family detached homes only. amended bill number 05-118, ordinance number 5997. This is the original document from rezoning from ag to PMIX, and it states in section four the following: "The development will provide substantial value to the city, incorporate sound planning principles and design, elements that are compatible with the surrounding properties and consistent throughout the proposed project, effectively utilize the land upon which the development is proposed, and further the spirit and intent of the unified development of the ordinance. Our neighborhood was designed and has long functioned as a low-density residential community. The streets, parking capacity, and utility systems were built with that density in mind. Adding multifamily would place a level of strain on our infrastructure that it wasn't built to handle. Our neighborhood's land use exists for a reason. It is to maintain, maintain a stable and predictable environment where homeowners can invest confidently in their properties. We are not opposed to the development, but we are opposed to breaking the promise that was made to existing residents. We ask that you preserve what we have by keeping it single-family homes only. Thank you for your time and your service to our community."
Okay, thank you. Did you have someone with you that would like to speak as well, Kenzie?
Hi, my name is Kenzie Canstiner, I'm a seventh grader at East Mill School. I would like to tell you a reason why you should vote no to this plan. Over, it is overcrowding our schools. Multifamily homes can cause a sudden jump in the number of students attending our schools. Overcrowding can lead to a lower quality of learning, poor academic performances, increase of stress for teachers and students, behavior problems, and stress on transportation needs. Your decision today will not only affect the City of Lee Summit, but affect the City of Raymore and the school district of Raymore. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Violet Fearborn?
Hello, my name is Violet Fireburn, and I'm 13 years of age. I get that multifamily homes provides home for people, and yes, it's affordable, but there are also downsides. Before I get to the building, and if I have time, I'd like to bring up the pond. The pond has algae in it, but from what I saw in the photos, it's duckweed. And we own ducks, so what we could do is have ducks in the pond, 'cause ducks love duckweed, and it's really healthy for them. So that can help get that out of there and make the water better. And then with the dirt on the land, dirt goes for a lot of money, so like, the developers just want money, they can just get the dirt and sell it, because that goes for a lot of money, and then with the worms, you can sell the worms for fishing. And then the road, in my opinion, it'd be a bit of a bad design, because I drive there normally, 'cause I do a lot of activities, and I noticed that there are so many potholes, and people are always having to fix it. So that can cause a lot of issues with what they're wanting to do. The traffic light in the one spot is a good idea, but they hadn't been talking about extending the road originally, so I feel like that'd be more of an issue, especially with the truck activity. The land is north of our house, and while doing research in our neighborhood, back in 2006, the field was originally scouted for park, rain garden, safety center, or something else, not for a school, and not for multifamily buildings. Last time, my, oh my gosh, sorry. Last time, my presentation, I'm so sorry, I'm not able to talk currently.
Fine, take your time.
Last Zone Board meeting, I ended with a question. We drive along the lot, lot, so there are many places like ours that they could buy and build at. For example, 291, there is an area on the side of the road that's for sale, so if it doesn't pass, they can build there, 'cause there isn't many homes, so there wouldn't be much of an issue with building it. So why this place, why here? Finally, with it being right on the border, it would be confusing, because it's right on the border between Raymore and Lee Summit, so why? Money or people? Think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Wright?
Thank you, Council. I'm not from Lee Summit, I'm from Raymore. I don't know how many are here from Raymore. There we go. Okay. I look at this map, gentlemen, and what you seem to have forgotten...
Could you address the council, sir?
Yes, okay.
That's, that's the kind of format here.
Thank you. What they seem to have forgotten to do is come one street over to Jeter, where all of our properties along Jeter are three-plus acres, that entire street, even in the new development going up on Gore, there are 23 homes that are on three-plus acre parcels. What they have not looked at, in my opinion, is where's the water going? I live at the lowest part of the street, and the water comes through there on a heavy rain, and up to the road level through the bridge on my property, and it's only going right into that development. I do not honestly feel that has been addressed completely. I brought this up in Raymore, because of the homes above us, where's the water going? I was assured that, under control. The recent heavy rains that we had, and granted, we have been in a drought here recently, but in the rains that we had, their detention pond filled up to the brim, and they hadn't even finished it. Where's the water going to go? Into this development. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Lori Ryan?
I think you guys all have my presentation up there. The rental availability within a 10-mile radius of Kensington Farms, both in Lee Summit and Cass County slash Raymore, there are currently over 250 open apartments and townhouses. I spoke with someone at the venue Town Homes in Raymore, and they were hoping, when they completed in December of 200, or 2023, to be at capacity, or 95% capacity by 2024. They are currently at 80% capacity. They cannot fill up. There are, the highest rent for townhouses is $2,200. The highest rent overall in the zip code of 64083 for a 2,900 square foot home is $2,800. I'm not sure what market we're going after, whether it be independent living, which we were told last time, now it's 55 and over, now maybe not, we don't know. I don't know who we're gonna rent to. If you can afford $3,500 a month for rent, you can afford a house payment. When we talked about the barrier to purchasing a bit ago, we talked that this is the worst it's ever been. In 1970s, the interest rate was 13.5%, and we didn't have what is now considered creative financing, so you didn't have the option to buy with 5% down. You didn't have the option to say, "Oh, I'm not gonna put anything down." You had to have 20% to 50% down to purchase a home, and by God, they still did it. If people would've waited, they wouldn't have bought a home till the late 80s, early 90s. So, they figured it out. We talked about alleys in the townhouses. Alleyways contribute to 11% increase in crime in residential areas. Ask Arborwalk and ask Longview. Our 55 and over living, which I think you guys covered that, 'cause we're not sure if it's gonna be that or not, which, my understanding from speaking with the Fountains of Rain Tree folks, who are actually opposed to this, they have to have 20% under 55. So I'm not sure if you can actually restrict that unless it goes in the HOA covenants. The last page is what I was given when I purchased my home. If you look at the top-left map, that is the cottages that were supposed to be coming, that is future development, future development, and down in the bottom-left corner, it says "single-family homes," not rentals. Our covenants codes and restrictions are also commented in there, and they say, "No more than two non-related, blood-related, whatever you wanna call it, adoption, et cetera, can live in a home."
Okay, thank you.
So townhomes would break that.
Lori Ward?
Can I use this? That little magic thing, you know. Oh, look at you. I'm just gonna print these. Hi, my name's Lori Ward, and I live at 1038 Southwest Cheshire. I am speaking on behalf of at least four, five, six individuals that are here, and came so that they could swear in to say that I had their permission to speak for them. So I've prepared about a seven-minute thing, depending on how fast I talk, which is why I printed these, 'cause the more excited I get, the quicker I talk.
Who's with you? I'll give you five minutes, ma'am.
There's a couple others, but, okay, my name's Lori Ward, and I live at 1038 Southwest Cheshire Drive in Kensington Farms, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of myself and other residents who are deeply invested in the long-term health, safety, stability, and integrity of our community. I respectfully ask you to deny PL 2025098, Pathways at Kensington Farms, in its current form. When we purchased our homes in Kensington Farms, we did so based on a clear and consistent promise, a promise made in the 2006 CCRs in builder marketing materials, in HOA documentation, and in the city's Ignite comprehensive plan. This community was designed, represented, and approved as a single-family R1 neighborhood with one unified HOA, consistent lot sizes, stable ownership patterns, and a cohesive character. The zoning of PMIX was to provide Kensington Farms a community within a community with a rain garden, school, safety center, and single-family homes. It is the only PMIX in the area, not because it was ever intended for multifamily commercial property, no, because Polte dreamed and sold the city on the idea of this block of land being a natural buffer from single-family to rural ag areas. See, if I'd've known I had five minutes, I'd've made it fit. The proposal before you tonight does not uphold that promise. The city's Ignite plan and current zoning designate this area as a residential category 1, which is explicitly intended for detached, single-family homes at a low density. That category, your category, states lot sizes of approximately 8,500 to 10,000 square feet and stable suburban streets and infrastructure patterns. However, the revised proposal introduces commercial rental investment buildings, which are R6, three-plex and six-plex attached commercial investment buildings, commercial rental-style independent living units, mixed tenure, and multi-unit building forms. This is functionally R6 density inserted into a single-family district without a rezoning request, which is de facto zoning change, without the transparency and public accountability that rezoning requires. Allowing this would not only breach the Ignite plan, it would signal to every homeowner in Lee Summit that future land use designations are optional. These are, these are parts of the 2006 CCRs for Kensington Farm redistrict development to single-family detached dwellings only. The top part is the rain garden addendum that was given to the folks that bought under Polte, and it was supposed to be the nation's largest rain garden. It also lists daylight and walkout basements, above that, it talks about there being a school, and a safety center, and a community center. So approving a three-plex or six-plex commercial investment of units contradicts the recorded land use contract that homeowners relied on when purchasing here. Breaking that promise exposes the city and the developer to legal challenge, undermines faith and integrity in the development review process, and tells residents that commitments made to them can be undone later. This is not simply a land use decision, it is a trust decision. Two HOAs... Two HOAs, or three, it introduces in the initial phase, two separate HOAs within one subdivision. That means conflicting rules and enforcement standards, confusion over stormwater basin ownership and maintenance, legal disputes between associations, a higher risk of deferred infrastructure, and ultimately, the burden shifting back to the city when the systems fail. There is no planning rationale for two HOAs in one connected neighborhood, it does not serve residents, it creates administrative instability by design. Those are also the CCRs. Well, you've heard drainage, infrastructure, and traffic burdens. Here it shows. Two-lane rural with a ditch, two-lane rural with a ditch. Yeah, they can go out and make a right, make a right, but they can't make a left, 'cause you're gonna end up next to cows. Drive around, check it out. Property value and safety, while small-scale general density can be compatible when carefully integrated, large multi-unit rental-capable buildings consistently carry higher turnover, reduced maintenance consistency, higher code enforcement demand, and documented increase vulnerability to crime within surrounding radius zones. And a study out of UA Little Rock confirms this pattern. Even if marketed initially as 55 for sale without permanent deed restrictions, these units can and often do convert to rentals. We've seen this in every metro region in this state, and once that shift occurs, there is no going back. Two years we worked to oppose a landfill being plucked down in a rural, single-family, abandoned-by-the-city slab of land because a developer saw an opportunity. That developer painted the... That developer painted themselves a hero, but they were not. Please continue the protective nature of your residents, even if out in the most southwest corner. And I'd just like, for those who may not have driven by, those are the signs that surround Kensington Farms. How in the world is somebody purchasing a home here supposed to have known that the city would wiggle and bend and shift because somebody saw a plot of land that absolutely has been abandoned, either by the developers, there's been at least five, if not six of them, and possibly the city? Right? So there's a lot of issues. But additionally, because they're here, I'd like to say, this is what you get with single-family, and this is Kensington Farms. And those are our neighbors going through a scary health issue, and it's right across the street from us. And I thought, what a perfect sign, as a sign for all of you to see. This is what single-family homes do. And I'd also like to just add.
That was kind of a mic-drop moment. You should have exited.
I know. And let me share, that was an absolute expectation of the people I spoke for, so I'm just going to go over and get it and drop it. But I would like to think that those of you in real estate are well aware that location is important. It's a great plan. I think Lee Summit deserves it. The people who want to live here deserve it, but we don't deserve it in our subdivision. And Lee Summit does have the biggest footprint in the state, especially after acquiring some Greenwood Place. So, right, let's use it. Let's use it and be smart.
All right, thank you.
I told him there was free ice cream, too, so.
She got a lot, she got a lot out of five minutes.
I could have talked faster.
No, I actually, I watched the planning commission. I liked this presentation. This was, this was efficient.
Well, you know, a few more repetitions, and I get better, I promise.
Okay, I've got, whoever would like to speak first, Bridget or Richard? I think you're together, maybe?
Yeah. He wanted me to speak for him, if that's okay?
Yep.
I don't think mine will go six minutes, but. Hi, I'm Bridget Bruce, and my husband, Richard Bruce, back there, we live in Kensington Farms, on the end of Blackpool Street. And how do I follow Lori? I'll try to be quick. Let's see. You all received an email from me regarding what I had found with working with a lawyer on the appeal process. I understand we're not going through that, but I did want to point out there was a Section 15-29.3 that requires after, in the municipal code for the city, that after there is a denial by the planning commission, six votes on the city council. We'd only heard five votes, so if we need that extra, hopefully that looks at. My first question is, why would you overturn the 6-1 decision by the planning commission when they're your advisory board? They're supposed to do all the work and look at that. Then the applicant's supposed to come back with the response as to why they were, made an error in their decision. So here's my concerns. On page four of the applicant's handouts, I mentioned, and it was quoted in the minutes, and it was also in the paper, that 1,080 cars will be coming up and down my road, or Waterloo. Those are the only two arteries that exist that are going to supply the cars to the multiplexes. The only two. That's a lot for any one street to absorb. We have asked the developer in our neighborhood meetings, can you add another entranceway? That's going to be planned, one and two, that's six years that we're looking at these cars going up and down our street that we have to deal with. With no stop signs, no turnarounds, none of that, we've already talked about at the planning commission. Second point is the wetlands. Blackpool is a river. They should have named it Riverpool, because when it rains, the eight of us that live there right now, we get floods. The house to the far east gets actually water in their basement. Currently, or prior to the developer coming in, it was owned by our HOA, so that's a fight for us with our HOA. Now that this land's going to be owned by a developer, who do we fight with? Do we have any rights? Because that's not their problem, it's our property in a different subdivision. We have asked, and the planning commission also recommended the Corps of Engineers do a study. They've asked that the city planners look at this and have someone come out and relook at those wetlands and see if the drainage is there. They may can make a promise that the drainage is taken care of, but we are going to be the ones living right there dealing with it. And I'd like that to be noted that I object to that. Lastly, density.
I'll give you one more minute.
Okay, sir. The density increased by 22%. Again, that's a big amount for our small neighborhood to absorb with different HOAs. Right now, we don't allow parking on our streets. You start allowing parking next door to me and up that street, that's going to cause confusion. So I proposed, and this has not been discussed with Tyler yet, but could we ask for a buffer between those houses that exist and the new ones coming in at one lot, at 30 feet, 50 feet, to show distinction between the two neighborhoods? So we have identity as Kensington Farms, and they have identity as Preserve at Kensington. In summary, the planning commission vote is 6 to 1. The plan not sustainable, neighborhood does not support. Our major concerns of the wetland mitigation, drainage, were not addressed tonight. Please deny or recommend that they start over and address the concerns that are voiced tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't think, I think this is the last one I have in my hand up here, which is Robert Elliott. Have you spoken? I don't think you have. Yes, would you like to speak?
I think it's covered by everybody ahead of me.
Okay.
I'll come down there.
You're only going to get one shot tonight, though. I know the planning commission, they gave you two, but.
I'm Robert Elliott. I live at 1906 North Prairie Lane. That's directly across from where the, my house is, the house that, you're going to cut off my driveway if you, when you relocate Prairie Lane. So I'm kind of involved. And so I got up and spoke at the last meeting. Now, the reason I was, the traffic's been discussed, but it's been discussed from a standpoint, nobody can make a turn today going west, coming south on Prairie Lane. Nobody can make a turn without dropping in the ditches there. Nobody can, when you, at 5:00 in the afternoon, or, excuse me, 3:00 in the afternoon, traffic starts flowing down County Line Road, and you can't go north, you can't go south. Take the jog. There's way more traffic on this, on thoroughfares of coming out of Prairie Lane and Prior, and crossing the street, you just can't get across there. And it happens in the evening at 5:00, worse. But the city, excuse me, the school district has been given a bill of goods. The problem is, is the school district hasn't walked that property that they swapped for. They think they get two roads instead of just being on Prairie Lane, but there's way more traffic than, than they're going to deal with, and the bottom part of that to the west is wet. There's nothing you can do with it. And they've got to cut across. If they want to use it, then they've got to contend with the creek that goes through there. And I don't think the school district has been informed as to what's there. So somebody needs to take a close, hard look at this. I think we're getting a lot of promises, but nothing's been looked at close enough to make the, make the, this a reality. It's not going to work. It's just not going to work. And sorry for your time.
You're good, thank you. Okay, I don't have any more, but would you like, yes, you can speak if you'd like to. I would ask that you check in with the city clerk. Did you swear in when you came in? I need to swear you in. All right, if you could just give us your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Boris Morak. I live in southeast of the Kensington Farm. It's a new development, and I would like to share some information, how actually the, how actually the density looks like. So we're talking about from 2.2 to 2.7. Right now, the builders bending some, finding the loopholes, bending some rules, and create something like this. I cannot install the fence, because it's going to be fire hazard. You cannot, sorry, you cannot escape in case of fire. You cannot maintain the lawn, do anything, and similar scenario on the other side of the house. So this house visual 2.2 density. And city consider, city consider the concrete walls of the wells not a structure. So distance between each of the well to the city, to property line, eight inches. Eight inches. So main point, it's about follow the money. Why Kensington Farm? What's the point? Why they choose Kensington Farm to spend more money to fix the infrastructure, to fix the pipes, to fix everything? So perhaps there is a money involved there. So I would like to have the answer. And again, presenter shows the stages and emphasize on the market value and how the market developed. It's nothing prevent them to change the plan and move from the single houses, detached single houses, to something else. Thank you so much.
Would anybody else like to speak? Okay, come forward, please.
I did swear in.
You did swear in?
I did.
Thank you.
I'm Juanita Blackwell. I am Kensington Farms. My property backs up right to County Line Road. The last 20 feet of my property, I had to sign off as easement, so my fence is 20 feet in from the road. There's a 10-foot berm where trees are planted, and then you've got 10 feet for additional road expansion. Your average lane widths are 14 feet, so I don't know how the math's going to work, if they're going to, ever going to go from a two-lane road to a four-lane road to accommodate 1,000 more vehicles that would result from this development. I don't know if that's been considered. I thought about taking my tape measure and measuring the easement from the, on the other side of the road. I did not do that, but it doesn't seem like the road can go any bigger than it is currently to accommodate the development.
Okay. Yes, please, come sit down.
Good evening.
If you could just tell us your name and address, please.
Good evening. I'm a Vietnam veteran. We moved in our home in Kensington Farms in November of last year. I used a VA loan to move into that property on the premise that it was going to be single-family homes throughout that Kensington Farms. I know I was on the premise, which is kind of like wheeling out, I'm sorry, I apologize. On the premise, I bought the property that it was going to be single-family homes. Well, premise is kind of like out in the wind somewhere, you know? I should have been smarter. I probably would have not bought into Kensington Farms if I'd known this activity was going to take place. I know I've got VA veteran friends out here, and I know they're opposed to it also. And there was promises made to these people. It wasn't made to me. I said I was in the premise of thinking it was going to be single-family. But there was people out here that was promised certain things. And we look toward you to fulfill those promises that were made to us and made to them. You can sure say, you know, okay, we're going to change it. We're not going to uphold your promise. It doesn't fit within our project. Then the families end up going, who represents us? Who represents these people that are out here, the veterans, et cetera, that, that need your help in saying that this is, this is not the place for this development? That Kensington Farm is a residential special lot in a special place, and we'd like to keep it that way. Thank you.
Could you go get his name and address for the record, please? Thank you. Could you say your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Glenn Schmidt. I live at 1124 Southwest Wodeby on, on the, I call it the south side of Kensington Farms. I'm going to try to keep it short, because I know you have heard it a lot. You heard it a lot from the planning and everything else. But, and first of all, Tyler did a great job. I've been a construction, I'm retired now, but I'm going to retire as, in, as an estimator and project manager for commercial buildings. A lot of change, the pictures you see today and everything else, they're going to get changed again. There's no doubt about it. When a project starts from the beginning to the end, it is completely changed. There's change order for that. There's changes on the ordinances and everything else. But what you heard tonight is what the feeling of the people of Kensington Farm and elsewhere, and I know as representatives for, you have to consider the whole thing. One thing that I know that was talked about was the price of these homes, $400,000 to $500,000. Well, the home that's right next to me that's being built by Inspired, it's $615,000. I'm 75 years old, okay? The 55 and older group, it'd be great. I would like to see a covenant saying, hey, this is 55 and older. But I know I'm not going to be able to there. One, I can't afford it at $25,000 to $3,000 a month. So I think that you guys, even, even the planning committee, it, one of the remarks was, yes, it's great to have this situation here, but not at Kensington Farm, for Lee Summit itself. I see Lee Summit itself, all the construction being around, there's something said that was in the meeting, something like 17,000 single homes or apartments. I see a lot of these multiplexes going up, and that I don't, and some is in Lee Summit and some is not. But I think you have to consider the whole picture as a whole, what Kensington Farm is. It's a community for Lee Summit, and I hope that he could come back and present a better thing. It's not the right time for this type of a project. Thank you for your time.
I thought I saw one more hand. Is there one more? Okay. All right, thank you all very much. I'm going to go back to the script here, which is, now's our chance as council to ask more questions of staff or the applicant, based on what we heard. So I'm going to open up the floor to the council. We are still in public hearing, though. Councilmember Shields.
Thank you. I have just a couple of questions, kind of following up on some of the things that were mentioned tonight. The current CCRs that cover the Kensington Farms property, do those cover this property as well? Do you have to amend them, or were they never adopted to cover this property? Can you answer at the microphone?
No, they only encompass the existing homes that are.
No, they only encompass the existing homes that are currently built.
Okay.
This piece of ground is completely separate.
Okay. So they're just not encumbered by those restrictions at all?
No.
Okay. And then it's, the proposal that you have before us tonight is for 540 units, is that right?
Correct.
Total? About how many people do you think that would serve, or how many people would live in those total? I would think two or three.
Average, two, two and a half, or 2.3, I think is the current average. It's actually something interesting that I pulled up in the Ignite Plan. I think it's 2.7 now, but it's actually projected in the future to go down to 2.3.
Okay, so it's 1,100-ish, doing the bad math in my head?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Those are the only additional questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'll just ask a couple of questions. Mr. Burks, what, usually, I mean, you've had neighborhood meetings, and you've tried to address concerns as you've gone along. Can you, in a respectful way, describe that process?
Sure. Yeah, so initially, we have our initial thoughts on the plan, right? And then we send it out to everyone to have a neighborhood meeting. Prior to that, we actually go to city staff and receive comments from city staff, and they provide us with guidance on how to change and manipulate the project site plan, and then they say, you know, they give us comments on those things. And then we change along the way. I think we actually had two pre-application meetings with city staff at least. And then, once we got to a good, solid point with the pre-application process, we determined that it was okay to go out to the neighborhood meeting, and so we sent out, I think it was well over 300 mailers at that time. Not everybody got it, I'm understanding of that. And then we had the neighborhood meeting, we had boards up there presented just as we did tonight, received feedback, many of the same comments that we heard tonight. And we addressed a lot of those in many different ways. And the biggest one was just reducing the overall density of the project, so. And we completely eliminated one type of product and changed it out with a totally different one as well.
Did you continue to engage with some of the community?
Yeah, we did. I've actually had some phone calls with some of the folks that actually spoke tonight individually, and then also some other folks that didn't speak tonight. And then we also had a separate neighborhood meeting. In addition to, we had a non requirement neighborhood meeting with Rain Tree Lake to get their feedback as well. I've heard nothing but positive things from Rain Tree Lake on the project from several residences and also the leaders there. And then, in addition to that, after...
Stop, stop, everyone. We've had a really good meeting so far. I'm actually super proud of how it's gone. It's not easy, it's hard, but let Mr. Burks make his statements, and we'll get through this.
Yep. And then, just last week, or the week prior, forgive me for time, we actually met with the leaders of Rain Tree Lake again to confirm our project and explain to them why we did what we did. Big thing was the utilities that are in there and also the current market conditions as well. And they were understanding, and then that's why they provided us with a letter of support.
You've done this elsewhere?
Yeah. Lenexa City Center was my latest project, where we had neighborhood meetings, also a somewhat controversial project as well, putting townhomes and multifamily next to million-dollar homes and a private golf course unanimously approved.
All right. Any other comment from council, or not comments yet, questions?
Good. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. What did I do with my script? I think I'm, oh, there it is, thank you. I'm glad you're here tonight, thank you. Mr. Burks, do you wanna make, I know that I just asked you questions, but do you wanna make any last comment before I close this public hearing?
Sure. First and foremost, I mean, we do wanna be good stewards of Lee Summit as a whole, right? We truly do appreciate the feedback and working with the city staff as well as the neighbors. Again, I even called a couple of them today even before the meeting. I said, hey, I apologize that I didn't get a chance to speak with you prior to tonight, but I would love to meet with you afterwards and still continue to work on the project together. And I truly mean that. As, you know, as a developer, I know that a lot of us kinda get looked at as, you know, not nice people, I guess, right? And so I wanna change that from that perspective. Again, I'm from here, I care about this place, and I wanna continue to invest in this area. And, I mean, we'll just leave it at that. I truly care about the area, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Hearing note for the testimony, I'm gonna close the public hearing and reopen the regular session, so is there any council discussion on this application? Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I wanna say I appreciate all the residents who came out. It's wonderful to see people engaging in a respectful way on issues that affect them. I would support this project because I believe that the drainage improvements will be good for the area for a lot of my constituents in Rain Tree, because I believe that having places for 1,100 people to live is really important. You know, hearing that there's not a lot of opposition from the school district, I think is great. And it just, to me, it looks like a design that's carefully considered to phase in the density from the existing single-family homes into a little bit more dense product. You know, I think having more rental opportunities as well as ownership opportunities is good. I've had, you know, friends who have moved in and out of the community, and, you know, when a job opportunity comes up and you need to be back in Lee Summit in a month, it doesn't always give you time to shop for the right home. And having opportunity to rent a townhouse or a villa for a year while you get your feet back in the community, I think it provides people a lot of flexibility. And there are people who are renters by choice, or people who rent because they don't have money for a down payment saved up. And while I own my own home, and I value that, I think other people should have the ability to make their own choices and to have different opportunities and different options. So I would support this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Rader.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank all of you for coming out today. It was, or this evening, it was really good to hear your feedback, your thoughts, your concerns about this development. And I will say that I would agree that this is not the right place for this subdivision, although we need these types of developments in Lee Summit. We need them as areas and places where people can buy homes. I'm not opposed to the mix, the P-mix of it, maybe not in Kensington Farms, but certainly it addresses a lot of the things that we need, the missing middle, the twins, the duplexes for people that, seniors that wanna move out of their homes. It would be great if perhaps in the back of this, there could be a senior place. I like the 55 and older that they could move to once they're, once they wanna move out of their larger homes. I like the price range of the first phase that he's building in the 4 to 5s. We need that price range desperately here. But I can see that it's just the rental that is the big issue here, not disparaging rentals. There's a need for that when there's a need, but just, I just believe that, just not in this area. So I would not be in support of this development. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. I think this is too dense for the area, and because of that, I will not be in support of it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you. I too would like to thank everybody for coming out. You know, we don't get a lot of that here. We're looking at a lot of empty chairs most of the time, so I appreciate you guys taking the time to show up and show us how much this means to you, so thank you for taking the time. So I personally would like to see more for sale, and again, this has nothing to do with anything against rental or people who rent, but we need more single-family. And this is kinda how it was sold to the neighborhood, and I believe, you know, I put myself in their shoes, and if I moved into a neighborhood excited to be one of the first homes or into a developing community, I'm thinking, ah, this is exciting to be one of the first in. And then plans change, and it's not what you thought it would be. Well, you know, I live in a developed neighborhood that fully executed their plans, so I'm happy with that because that's what the plan was. And so, you know, I know it's been stated that, you know, market dictates. Well, I believe in situations like this, that community dictates. So I will not be in support of this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Lopez.
Thanks, Mayor. So, thank the developer, thank you guys for all your efforts. I think your product has a place in Lee Summit, in this community. You mentioned Lenexa, Kansas. That project out there is a phenomenal project, but I think the aesthetics and demographics of that area is a little different than this one. And again, I applaud your efforts, I thank all the citizens that have come out tonight as well. Thank you for being respectful and a good decor. That's how we are in Lee Summit. We respect each other and want to do the right thing always, including this body up here. I've also, many of us up here have real estate development experience, and to me, a key criteria is that, as the private developer and the citizens, I think any project that comes before an elected body has to be more cohesive. And the things that I've heard, I also watched the planning commission meeting as well, virtually, and I just, I see a lot of unanswered questions. And I'm not comfortable with allowing this project to proceed at this point. I would not be in support of this project going forward. I just think, I think there's a project here. This may or may not be the site. This product is necessary. We need this in Lee Summit, but just not at this site and at this time. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Carlisle.
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to thank everybody for coming out and letting us know how you feel about this. For the developer, I think this is a beautiful project. I love the way that you set it up. I do like that the townhomes have the alleyways to more push things to the forefront to make it feel like community. I think that's great. I completely understand the homeowners in the area not wanting the rental community in their single-family community, where I have no problem with that. I can see their point, and I love that you're bringing this to us. I just so wish it was for sale, at least options for sale. I mean, that is the missing middle to me, and I know this is the missing middle, but to me, the missing middle is for people who are trying to get into something, to get into homeownership, and so they can get one of those townhomes or, you know, part of a fourplex or whatever it is, and then build their way into the next step. And we have none of that in Lee Summit. And that's, so to me, in Lee Summit, that's what the missing middle is, and I wish it could be for sale. You are bringing us the missing middle, it's just not what this neighborhood wants there, although it is a beautiful project, and thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lowell.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it's a, it's a very, these are tough situations. Having lived through something similar in my neighborhood, and, you know, a product coming in that we felt was going to potentially, you know, diminish the values of the current homes in there, a different type of product, and so we've seen this happen, and we still have areas of development in Lee Summit where it starts as one thing, you know, whether that was the financial crisis or whatever that caused it to just kinda not fully develop. But I am sensitive to the homeowners that were there that bought into the single-family vision. The counter to that is like, if not this, then what? And so there's a real risk there, too, that nothing comes back, or something that is for sale comes back, that's a lower-type product, and we're in the same situation. What you'd rather see here is to figure out a better compromise with the right developer and the homeowners, and maybe that's that dense, that high density in the middle that's not, you know, that really causes that problem. I think maintenance-free homes have a place and can fit well with single-family residents. We've seen it all over. But because of what I think the impact would be to the residents that bought in early, you know, I won't support it in this iteration, but I do throw caution out there because, you know, what happens to your own values if nothing happens? And that's a real possibility, too. And so if something is to happen, you know, maybe there's a greater compromise between developer and homeowner that still pencils, because there is a financial implication to go do these things, and I do respect that and understand that, right? I mean, it's, yes, you are there to make money and provide something, you know, a return on what you're putting there. It would be difficult to develop that all single-family in today's current market. That doesn't mean that in a couple of years, that market hasn't changed, and maybe it's more suitable for more single-family. So I just, I wish there was, I wish that there was a way to come together and find a way to compromise and make some adjustments or changes that still make it financially feasible for you and benefits the residents that are currently there. I don't know if that can happen, but in this current iteration, in the way it stands right now, I'm gonna lean to support the residents that bought that single-family dream, that are sitting there hoping for it and hope that something comes along, because we say for sale, but then a type of product comes in for sale, and it's not quite to the standard of what you have. See, that's gonna be an issue, too. So anyway, it's a complex, complicated situation, and I'm just, in my opinion, I'm going to lean towards the current residents that are there in hopes of something better down the road for them and their investment that they made in Lee Summit. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Funk.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not gonna repeat everything my colleagues said. I agree with pretty much everything everybody said. Thank you to all the residents that have not only shown up here tonight, but withstood the time at the planning commission, to the developer of appreciate you wanting to come to our community and you want to develop. But Councilmember Carlisle kinda took my thunder that I do think this is the missing middle. I do like the way this lays out, but I do wish this product was for sale. And with that, I can't support this tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. That leaves me. Could you put up the applicant's presentation, Mr. Denny? I just wanna go to slide 18. Gosh, it's, I feel bad for everybody in this situation because Kensington has been not developed, you know, fully for such a long time, and nobody's investing there and are wanting to in this way, which is a big commitment. And I thought your presentation was excellent, Mr. Burks. You don't see that level of detail, and we see some complicated projects. This is, we see some really big and complicated developments, but I could see, I would just hate to see you give up on this tonight and not seek a path, as in other council members, as in what they're saying is, we'd like to see some kinda win here for both, the Kensington and for you. I can see this all day long passing, probably. I don't know, as far as council goes, but I could support something like the duplexes, the twin villas, where all the multifamily is. I think maybe that's a middle ground that you could find with the residents, because usually, I've been here so often, I haven't had a packed house like this as mayor and council in six years, maybe? Because usually, we push, please let me finish. We usually push the developers to get more consensus with the community around them. And I know that you've done this elsewhere and such, but this is, this is just, this is a hard one, when we know what we're used to approving up here, and I know that you fit it right in with our Ignite Plan really masterfully, but it doesn't really fit in with our Ignite Plan, because usually, usually, sir, there's a bunch of retail that's right along with it that we're trying to get done, and I know that that would come later, you know, if you were to do this. But I do think that some density with the twin villas, there's a huge market for these. If that would be something you would consider pursuing, if you're not upset when this is all said and done, and work on getting more consensus with the surrounding community. Because we really would like to see this area develop. Because we really would like to see this area develop, but we also want to see our residents happy. And we're not gonna get, those roads aren't gonna get fixed to the residents unless more houses are built, whether they're duplexes or single-family, whether they're for rent or for sale. We do need some more density down there to eventually help bring a little bit of commercial, I call them neighborhood business centers, not necessarily big, great big places, but we need something a little bit closer to you down there. So, I'm sorry, Mr. Burks, but you're not gonna end up with the votes tonight, and we do appreciate you trying to invest in Lee Summit. Yeah, we'll go ahead and read this, what's that? Councilmember's asking me if we kill it, kill it, terrible, if we vote it down, Mr. Burks can't come back and make modifications. I don't know, I see such a gap. I don't see, I don't see, I mean, to me, I just put a proposal up there for twin villas, like, I could vote for twin villas. Sixty days, what, go ahead, Mr. Denny.
Yes, Mayor, just to your point about if this is voted down, there's a 60-day timeframe in which things don't, through the UDO.
So he still has an opportunity?
Yeah, there's just a good time period.
I hope you consider it, Mr. Burks, because I love this product right here I'm seeing on the screen, I think this would be great down there, I think this would be a great fit for the community, it's a little bit more density, it's not the multifamily. And I get it has to pencil for you, so you may not pursue this because of that, but I sure would, I sure would like to see it move forward in that direction. So I'm just gonna go ahead and read this, and we'll, since Mr. Burks has 60 days thereafter to consider this, I'm gonna ask, Mayor Potem Lopez, would you please read Bill number 25-224?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I moved to advance a second reading, Bill number 25-224, an ordinance approving the preliminary development plan for the land located at 1231 Southwest Waterloo Drive for pathways at Kensington Farms, all in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 33, the Unified Development Ordinance, the Code of Ordinances for the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
All right, thank you, I've motioned to move to second reading, Bill number 25-224 by Mayor Potem Lopez, seconded by Councilmember Funk. Any more discussion on this application? All right, seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's denied 8-1, and again, I am sorry, Mr. Burks, I think you did a really good job. All right, thank you all for coming. Thank you to the crowd. I think I'll take a break, so you guys, if you want to leave at this point, we can give you an opportunity to take off, so, a little recess for 10 minutes.
But doing it with a spirit of excellence. I had the opportunity to continue to grow regardless of 30-plus years doing this kind of work.
It's more than just dollars and cents.
We're here really to give back.
Providing a service to better a community.
To go out and serve people.
To be a part of something bigger than yourself. If I would have known what I know now, years ago, I would have been here much sooner.
Traditionally, we think as police officers, those responding to law enforcement needs within the community. But honestly, we are there to serve our citizens. And our citizens do go into crisis. They do have mental health crises, and we're being called to those scenes on a regular basis. In order to help serve those citizens better, we did initiate the Crisis Intervention Team Program. These are officers that are specially trained to de-escalate crisis situations. Recently, we've brought co-responders onto the scene, licensed qualified mental health professionals housed within our police department. And they respond with those officers directly to those scenes where a crisis is occurring so they can interact with that citizen and get them the help they need right there on that scene.
The co-responders are either a bachelor or master level in a behavioral health-related field. They wear plainclothes. They don't carry weapons or anything like that.
I have a police radio that I listen to all day, listen for, you know, those key words, mental health, behavioral health, crisis.
There's a lot of officers that just call for me. I have my own radio number.
I also have the ability to self-dispatch to them on, say, 982, then route. Officers in route, 914.
So typically, I arrive after they've made it safe. I'll make contact and get kind of the rundown, and then I just kind of jump right in.
Like, hey, you know, my name's Allison. I'm a mental health professional. I'm here to help you. I'm not here to take you to jail or arrest you.
Sometimes, all a person needs is a voice, someone neutral, someone outside that, you know, can listen. I do a lot of safety planning, including family, their support network. Who's close to you? If they're home alone, who can come over and hang out with you today? Can we lock away your sharps? Can we put up your meds? Do you need meds? Can we get you over to the urgent care to get you assessed for your medications? Some of them also are like, oh, I'm so glad you came. This made me feel so much better.
Our main goal as co-responders is to, one, get people connected to the services that they need, and also divert from emergency rooms and jails.
And they almost get a different view of the police responding. That lets me know you care and the officers care.
Lee Summit Police, how can we help you?
My husband has--
In 2020, we had 722 mental health-related calls for service. 2022, by that time, 1,479. These mental health-related calls for service are increasing. How responding to that is increasing the number of Crisis Intervention Team officers we have available, as well as the number of co-responders we have available to respond on these calls.
So what I think is important for the community to know about the co-responder program is that we're here. We exist. All you have to do when you call 911 is ask for us. You know, say, hey, I want a co-responder to respond to this crisis, and we'll go. I was really struggling about eight years ago on my personal journey with mental health. And I met some amazing social workers and amazing programs that have helped me get to where I am today. I really couldn't see myself doing anything else. We want to help, and that's what we love to do.
So at a client, we got a call. She had some suicidal ideations, and she really felt that she had nobody. And, you know, in getting to know her story, getting to know who comes around and sees you. Well, then we found a support person, and they responded immediately. And we made a plan. I called back and checked on her in an hour, and then I checked on her in two hours. We were able to get her into additional services to where she talks to someone every week or more. I just took a person that really just thought they had nobody, and nobody would show up for them, and showed them, you do. And you'll be amazed who is in your corner if you just simply say, I need a little help.
You can make the difference in somebody's life.
If you're trying to get in the fire or EMS service, Lee Summit is probably the top name.
On a daily basis, we are tasked with an incredible task. So we're trying to keep it a relaxed environment.
As a new person, you are constantly on edge, learning.
Morning will look typical, coming in, getting a report from the shift that's going off, get our truck checks done.
Our citizens trust us and believe in us by providing amenities like our gear, our stations.
They build it to accommodate getting to a call, but also having a home. State-of-the-art weight equipment.
Individual bunk beds.
Downtime areas.
Breakfast and dinners together.
Cook together.
Get to know one another.
Train together.
Like a brother knows a brother, and a sister knows a brother. Banter back and forth, but when the tones go off, they go to work.
We're here for 48 hours, so it can happen at any time. You can be in the gym, you can be in the middle of the night, you can be cooking.
Stop what you're doing and listen.
Wherever we are in the station.
People will stop what they're doing and listen, finding out which station it is.
What is the nature of the call?
EMS, fire.
What apparatus?
Where are we going?
Is it in my district?
Can be on the highway, northbound, southbound, westbound.
Expectation.
What gear doing?
Other lives involved.
That adrenaline dump.
Pants on, coats on, getting in the truck, we're mentally focused, geared up, paying attention to where we're going. Then we have a game plan that happens in the truck. The officer can give direction, and the dispatcher will update you. The officer will listen, the driver will listen. We get all in the same page, then when we get to the call, we can go to work. So many degrees of severity, structure fire, swift water rescue.
EMS.
Car accident.
Technical rescue.
Tac medic team. Equipment the fire department offers us is top-notch, from ring cutter to extrication equipment. State-of-the-art stuff, great trucks.
Tablet, Lucas device, battery-powered pot.
The right tools, the right training. The learning does not stop in the academy.
Building blocks continue, call after call. Opportunities to grow. Started out as a firefighter paramedic, moved to the rank of engineer paramedic, most recently the qualification of acting captain.
Firefighter, engineer, recently promoted to captain.
Promoted to paramedic since I've been here. I'll be honest, it's scary sometimes. You're the one back there that person is having a bad day, and they're counting on you.
We practice these scenarios over and over. So when someone has an emergency, we can channel those energies, minimizing any more injury. And then when it's over, we'll say, hey, how did we do? How is everyone doing? And we'll have frank conversations back at the station. Station assignment for us is a 48-hour, 96 days off.
The four days off is probably one of the greatest things ever.
Help us improve our sleep patterns, wellness, mental health. It gives you many, many options.
I have a small, little 15 acres that we like to hobby farm, backpacking in the spring and in the fall. Mountain biking when the weather's good.
I have a 21-month-old at home, so I feel like I get to work a full-time job. And then on the four days off, be a stay-at-home mom as well.
Spend a little more time with my kids, travel around the world. I was able to take my oldest daughter on a trip of a lifetime. We went to Europe for 22 days. I got hired to help others. Helping others also helped me see my children grow, see my family grow, see my career grow, and me grow as a person.
People that are in the industry know the name of Lee Summit Fire Department. Every fire academy knows it, every other fire department knows it. If you're looking for a job in the fire service, Lee Summit's the place to be.
That's who you want to be, somebody who can make positive change in all the human beings' lives.
Welcome to the Lee Summit Sign Department. We are going to walk you through our process from start to finish. We make signs as needed here. It's not like we just go out into the field and place a speed limit sign here, no parking here. Our traffic engineers, they go through, and they'll do field studies. They'll send us down an engineering work order for us to go out, place new signs or remove signs as needed. Coming from the material, our blanks come in, and they're just aluminum blanks. We can put our white, our red, our fluorescent yellow-green, whatever. And basically, what it looks like is just that there. Throw it up into the roller.
Welcome back, everyone. I'm still got a nice crowd. This is cool. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We love that you're learning about what the city council does on a typical Tuesday night. You know, we're here till midnight, pretty much, how many times this year? Probably about a billion times, like every other week, we were here till midnight. Sometimes we leave here, we go back, we're in closed session for hours, so we-- And nobody gets grumpier than her. She does not like staying late. We're going to go back into the meeting. Agenda item six is the public comment portion. It looks like we've got a few people that want to talk about trash, given there's an agenda item that we're going to be discussing later, so-- And then, we do have quite a few, but you all know the format. I'm not giving more than three minutes, and on this one, I'm not giving people extra minutes for speaking for somebody else. We got to get through this night. There's even an ordinance that if we don't get to, we can only read, what's the time?
11 o'clock.
Yeah, 11 o'clock. We can't read a new ordinance, so I do have to try to stay on schedule because she always makes me follow the rules, so. So we'll just start on the single, or, excuse me, on the public comment. We'll start with Zach Alshwesh.
Awesome. That was great, and thank you for any of the Kensington, New York, people who stuck around. So, yeah, I want to speak about the Single Hauler Initiative. I don't know, do we have the projector? We can get the projector on? Do I need to turn it on? Oh, there you go. Perfect. All right, for those who don't know, this is an initiative that centralizes waste management through the city and makes it illegal for virtually every disposal company to operate in Lee Summit. Now, obviously, that's bad for the disposal companies, but that's bad for the residents too, because that means that people lose their choice. And so you'll be stuck with whatever price the city wants to charge you, and you'll be stuck with whatever level of service they decide to give you. And I have to say, I find it very disappointing the way this city council has been approaching the Single Hauler Initiative. It appears that no one involved pushing this project forward has any intention of representing the will of our community. You created a task force that asked the community about this initiative, and as you can see posted, 64% said they were in opposition, only 18% said they were in favor. And a portion of that 18% that were in favor were government employees and their family who would benefit from this initiative. As I understand, Mr. Michael Parks, the head of Public Works in Lee Summit, his wife was one of the 18% when the information was sunshine. And apparently, she submitted her public comment using his email address. So that seems a bit odd, but I might be misinformed. Michael's going to speak later tonight. Maybe he can set the record straight if I am. And I'll try to keep it as respectful as I can, but I will say this, there seems to be some conflicts--
You need to make sure you do keep it respectful.
I'm going to keep it respectful, but there are conflicts of interest and ulterior motives that have to be unpacked, so.
And you need to stay in the lane of--
We're staying in the lane, sir, let me talk.
All right.
So Michael's the head of Public Works. You know, this Single Hauler Initiative would grow his organizational empire within the city. Public Works would now be able to show revenue and would get to add multiple employees to its staff. And I realize Michael's not an elected official like you guys, but still, as a public employee, he has a fiduciary responsibility to represent the will of the people, not to fabricate support for a program that harms the residents and only benefits a handful of people. But it's not just Michael who has a conflict of interest. Beto, Bill, you both sit on the, on the mark as board of directors. For those who don't know, Mark is the Mid-America Regional Council. In fact, Beto, if I'm reading the 990 right, you're the highest-ranked public official.
You can call him council member Lopez, Mayor Potem Lopez, something along those lines.
All right, I probably won't. I'll refer to you guys by your name, that's all right. What I'll say is, Mark has been a driving force in this project, as shown in your own documentation since 2006, before either of you two or even in government. Mark has an interest in enacting this legislation, just as they did in KC Mo and even more recently, Miriam. It sets him up for more grant money. Now, Mark already pulls in $100 million per year in federal grants, and these grants are nearly 100% of the revenue. You've interrupted me, I'd like a little more time. They use this revenue to connect organizations and donors to politicians like Bill and Beto. You both are supposed to be here to represent us, not Mark. We understand that Mark, 100% of Mark employees and board wants this initiative, and that passing this initiative would put you in their good graces, which I'm sure would be super helpful to someone running for mayor here soon, or maybe somebody wanting Frank White's seat here soon.
I gave you more time, sir.
No, you interrupted me quite a bit. You both need to recuse yourselves, is what I'll say. Thank you.
No, sir, no, sir. I will set the record straight. I'm not a member of, not on the bar, mark board. Mayor Potem Lopez is, because I appointed him to serve in that position for me many years ago. And it's an organization that every city has to work with to get things done, so.
Sir, you're on their 990 tax form from 2024. You might want to have them adjust that if that's the case.
Yeah.
It's public record.
Absolutely. Well, that was a rough start. All right. Mr. Crosley, J.C. Crosley.
Hi, I'm J.C. Crosley. I live here in Lee Summit. There's a lot of reasons why I'm against the city contractor for the trash thing, but-- I used Constable for a long time. My family did. We moved here in 1959. We used George then. The thing is, even if George, even if Constable got the city contract, I wouldn't get the same service as I get from them now, because whatever I put out on my curb on Monday morning, they take away. If I have 15 bags of grass, well, their rule is 10, but they take the 15 bags. But if they've contracted with the city and they have to do that, the level of service will go down. If I put anything bulky out there, I've been to a deal, and they have bulky items once every quarter. Our service is going to be, my service will be very restricted to what I'm used to now. I don't know what I pay. The other argument I hear for having one city hauler is reduced traffic on the streets. Well, Amazon comes down my street at least twice a day. Sometimes it's to my house. But FedEx is on my street, and UPS is on my street. And my wife goes to the grocery store two or three times a week. My thing is, why are we worried about the traffic? I think it's a red herring is reducing the load on the traffic. I'm sure it does degrade the road somewhat, but maybe our roads aren't being put in correctly to handle that kind of traffic. Anyway, I'm very much against it. I think free choice, I think capitalism. We got small haulers, we have large haulers. I used to own a heating and cooling business here in Lee Summit, and I dealt with trash all the time. And I finally had to find a small hauler to get the service I needed, because the big guys, the waste managements, the republics, they are huge corporations. They talk to thousands of people, no, they deal with hundreds of thousand people today because they're corporate, they're nationwide. Their level of customer service is horrible. I'm telling you what, when you have customer service from who you choose to have it from, and I think that's what-- I think anybody in opposition is, is to lose their choice of who they're going to buy from. And when we're forced to buy from someone that the city decides who we're going to buy from, because it won't be the residents that are making the decision, it'll be the city council making that decision with staff's recommendations. It won't be our choice, and we'll be stuck with something that maybe we don't want. And maybe some people do want to have that chose for them, but I don't want to lose my choice, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, Matt McVay.
Good evening, city council. Thank you. Speaking in favor of the, just kidding, I'll be neutral. City council members, thank you for the time. I offer for your consideration on this matter what ethical scholars call Immanuel Kant's categorical imperative, or what I like to call the cut-in-line principle. The categorical imperative, or cut-in-line principle, helps us decide the morality of a decision by asking the question, what would happen if everyone were to do the same thing that I'm considering? For example, on the surface, it may not appear to do much harm if I cut in line. However, what if everyone were to cut in line? The line would cease to exist, and a mob would ensue, therefore, cutting in line is wrong. In general, I support trying new solutions to improve things. After all, one of our central purposes in this life is to leave this world better people than we were growing up, and to leave society better than it was when we found it. However, let's apply the categorical imperative. What happens if every other city were to adopt a single hauler solution? And then the cities come together to take, apply that same principle, and now we have one single hauler for the entire metropolitan area. Then what happens when the owners of that, of that single hauler solution, despite their great intents, end up selling it to a major corporation? Now we lose control, and then the impetus, the momentum it takes to change that becomes huge, because you have multi-city contracts. So I don't, I don't pretend to know all the details, the ins and outs of the contracts, but I just offer that for your consideration, the categorical imperative. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Don Rosenberg.
Thank you, guys. My name's Don Rosenberg. I live 1414 Highway Lane, Sarko, Billy Summit since 1960. All about free enterprise and small business. About 20-some years ago, Deaf and Ball took over the contract or disposal for our city dump that Rex at that time was in charge of it, and he said, this thing's going to fill up, we won't have no room for nothing. Well, we found out that Deaf and Ball took all their work somewhere else, and it caused a little bit of a-- I don't know if it was a cost analysis or a problem there, but as far as free enterprises go, when I was in the toll business, I owned Tiger Toll and Lee Summit. The city, through Mayor Karen Meschler, he would say, hey, we need to do a fair bid process. Sometimes those fair bids would turn into a high franchise bid to where the companies that wanted to participate would have to pay money to participate. It should be okay if public wants to have a contract, city-approved bid trash service, let them participate. But the ones that don't want to, that want to use Constable or Wasting Away or Teds or somebody else can still do that, where there won't be an implication on them or us as our taxpayers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Larry Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Larry Reynolds, I live over on South Madison. I moved to Lee Summit in 1973, so I've had several trash haulers during that time. Right now, I have one that I'm very pleased with. I also was Constable a long time before they sold out. What my problem is, when the city takes over, we lose our self, we lose ourselves to be able to choose what we want. We choose you by voting you in the office, but we can't choose our trash collector? I find that to be a problem. I'm very much opposed to a universal trash system. I can see using zones in the city, I can see using some things like that. Would have to be somebody else smarter than me to figure that out, but I know it could happen. I'm very much opposed to the city taking control of the trash hauling. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, next is Diana Stanley.
I'm Diana Stanley, and I live on Annette Street. And my complaint or disagreement with the city taking over is the vast difference between the different companies' service. I have been here since 1969. I have seen all different kinds of service, and I've had families where I've had lots of trash. Now, I'm older, I don't have families, I only have a little trash. And yet, I had my service raised like $10, and then it went $30 above it, and then $100 and some dollars. And I said, for a 13-gallon bag of trash, that seemed ridiculous. So I started looking, and I found someone that I felt was reasonable. They pick up the trash can, they don't throw it and tear up my yard, or tear up my trash can, and they're reasonable for the amount of trash that I have. Probably the more trash that I need most is like leaves and that kind of yard trash. So I felt what little that was over for the regular trash would be compensated with the leaf trash. Maybe everybody doesn't have that problem, but I see my neighbors with the huge trash cans overflowing and aside, and I have a little bag down on the bottom of this great big huge trash can, and they want me to pay the same, that I was paying the same they were until I changed. And I'm concerned that when this, if the city were to take over, they would level that out, and everybody would be paying the same, because you would have the same trash company, and it would be convenient for billing and all that sort of thing. So that's my disagreement with it. Thank you all.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Amy Fox.
Good evening. I'm Amy Fox, and I'm a 27-plus-year resident of City Council District Four. And I'm here tonight to speak in opposition of the City Trash Hauler Initiative. And I am here to remind you of your fiduciary duty as elected officials. In the United States, we have a constitutional republic. And in a republic, the people are the sovereigns, and we delegate some of our authority to you to secure our property, to secure our person, and to secure our liberty. And liberty, quite simply, is just the ability to exercise freedom. That is your fiduciary duty, and that is what you take an oath to do when you assume office. Now, last month, at the Public Works Committee meeting, City Hall said that they were going to ask City Council for contractual authority to enter into a contract situation with the Single Trash Hauler Initiative. Now, that authority just does not manifest out of thin air. That authority currently resides and rightfully resides with the people. They currently have the ability to fire and hire their own trash-- They currently have the ability to fire and hire their own trash hauler according to their life circumstances, and they change. So if you transfer that authority to the people and give that to the city, that is a violation, a gross violation of your fiduciary duty, and it does an injustice to your oath of office. I say we should stick with the free-market system. It is the most innovative, it's the most responsive to the people, it's nimble to the desires of the people, and for you diversity people, it offers and encourages diversity of services, as you've just heard. As opposed to a centralized system, which opens itself up to corruption and certainly to control. So, in closing, I would say the city will never be able to come up with a one-size-fits-all system that pleases everybody, nor should they attempt to do that. So I call on you to not, I have to do it, okay? I have to do the pun here. Don't trash our freedom. Don't trash our freedom, and don't hand government more power. Thank you.
And Ms. Vollenweider.
I'm not sure if people will remember, but back in 2005, we received a letter like this. And for those who had ag properties, or ag homesites, or acreages, it was scary to get this. And it contained all of these names and their parcels and their addresses. My name was on there. I want to go back to Paula Deal. Paula Deal was required, and I wanted to show where her properties were. This is Prior Road. The development we were talking about earlier tonight is down south of here. So Prior Road is a road that's probably going to experience some expansion. So the city wants what? The city wants right-of-way. So how do you get right-of-way? Well, normally, you'd write, send a letter to the person that owns the property and tell them what's going on, and you'd ask for either an easement, use of the property, or you'd ask to buy a strip of land so that the city would own the fee simple title to the land. Well, Paula was required to pay to re-own her property and to plat her property, because she was building, putting a building on an R1 property. Well, what's the big deal about having a building on an R1? Or having two, or three? Or buildings that are too big? Wasn't a problem on 5261 Northeast Maybrook Road. Was no problem there. Well, it's called selective enforcement, and the ends justify the means. Why do you want that rezoning and that plat? You want it because you want right-of-way, and you don't want to pay for it. Here's the first plat for Paula. Now, if you notice, it's an engineer that did that plat. Engineers can't do plats. Engineers can't survey unless they're also PLSs. Who allowed that? Hector Soto? Gene Williams? Kathy Kramer? None of them said anything to her.
All right, thank you, Ms. Vollenweider. All right, that's all I have in my hands.
She even did another one.
No, Ms. Vollenweider. This crowd's not used to this.
I want to end with, somebody got some document to the county, and the county has now changed the tax map.
Flash glance, Ms. Vollenweider. Thank you.
If I audited the county for that, what would they provide to me?
If you only knew, if you only knew what you were encouraging, she is relentless.
You bet I am.
So, yeah, we know. So, I'm moving on to the rest of the agenda. You need to stop talking. So, okay, I'm going to have to take us to our proposed ordinances. Oh, no, wait, where were we? Yes, 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 proposed ordinances.
Presentation.
Presentation. Oh, yeah, okay, 8, 7B. There we go. So, what many of you were just speaking to, we're going to have a presentation on the contracted residential solid waste services request for proposals. Michael Park, Director of Public Works.
Okay, Mr. Head, I'm being asked if we need to do anything with Presentation 7A, right before this. All right, thank you.
We ready?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Michael Park, Director of Public Works. I also have with me Mike Anderson, Deputy Director of Public Works Operations, and Chris Pusson, our Solid Waste Superintendent, who are both instrumental in this process to date. Thank you for your time. I also appreciate the residents who voiced their opposition, their support, and the comments that we've solicited throughout this process. All of that feedback we've received are really what helped shape the RFP that we're discussing tonight. And that's what we're doing this evening, is we're presenting the RFP, which is the Request for Proposals that has been, that has been developed, that really define the scope of services that you have set us out on task to deliver. We're not asking for you to make a decision to contract or not contract tonight, we're not seeking a vote from the City Council. We're looking for that further direction as we present what you've asked staff to deliver, which is that Request for Proposal, so that we can complete the exploration of this initiative, so we can see a fully informed picture of this priority goal, so you can make a decision here shortly after the New Year. And I intend to go through how we got here and what we've done. As I mentioned, it's been a long approach, and where we're at and what's next, so those next process. Some of these slides you'll see are repetitive, from where we started our work session conversations in February and March, and to the Public Works Committee, thank you for all your work. I know you've seen this multiple times as well, so apologies, but I think it was wise for us to bring back and re-go over all of this history with you, because it has been at least six months for several of you upon the dais, and perhaps one of you haven't seen it at all, because you weren't involved in these initial meetings. This started really with our strategic plans. It has been a reoccurring initiative over the last 25 years. These strategic plans, and our most recent strategic plan, Ignite, whether it be the comprehensive plan or the overall strategic direction of the city, involved a lot of participation from our residents. It's their recommendations, it's for the residents, by the residents. And one of those recommendations in the strategic plan by our residents was to sustain and enhance city services, protect high-quality life, with a focus on maintenance and improvement of existing infrastructure, and to evaluate solid waste management services. I believe that is what led you to a work session about a year ago, as a full council say, what are our priority goals, and what do we want to advance, as we look at the strategic plan? If you recall, you had a retreat, all of you talked about what you would like to advance as a community from the strategic plan, or other community issues that you've been hearing about from your constituents, and we identified four priority goals. You identified beautification, housing, stormwater, and solid waste. And so we are focused here on this solid waste issue, as you had then had conversations with staff, and we presented in February and in March. We reviewed in those City Council work sessions what that priority goal meant, kind of the history of solid waste and contracted residential hauling, gave you that background, and we covered a number of concerns and opportunities, bringing awareness to this issue with you. Some of those concerns were, obviously, and you've heard it tonight, residents losing their choice of hauler. Then I told you expect opposition. I said there would be a vocal group, you're seeing that, there's also people in favor, but there is a very vocal group who are concerned about really their fundamental right to choose. I appreciate that, I respect that. Everybody's entitled to what that opinion may be, right? We expect hauler opposition as well, so resident opposition, hauler opposition, we also expect potential legal challenges. Some of these other potential concerns, we started to flesh out as we've worked through this process of developing an RFP and that public engagement. You know, things like additional resources for bill management, we've addressed that in the way we structured the RFP. Expanding city customer support services, we've addressed that in the way we've developed the RFP. In ways that, as city staff, we're not proposing any expansion, we're not proposing any new hires, we're not going to buy equipment, we're not going to have personnel, we're not delivering, we're rather contracting this service, with a contract that puts that responsibility on a contractor for customer service, billing, account management, those sort of things. The other thing you'll see here, and this was on the concerns as well as the opportunities, was a concern of limiting number of residential haulers operating in Lee Summit. As we've worked our way through this process, and you'll see in the presentation, there is still a lot of opportunity for haulers to do business in Lee Summit, whether that's commercial hauling, whether that is hauling for HOAs, or whether they're just still in the market in the metropolitan area, and there are 15 haulers working as contracted haulers from municipalities throughout the metro area. So there's still a lot of opportunities, I'm not sure we really have that concern, or really opportunity, to limit the total number, when you think about the broad perspective, the total number of haulers operating. So some of the opportunities, and I'll start with the basic foundation that I believe the council, when you had your retreat and you set this priority goal, was with good intention to improve service, reduce costs, and improve our neighborhoods. And you'll see a lot of that kind of fits into improving your neighborhoods, and we really don't know about the cost until we really fully explore a Request for Proposals and receive bids from the market. And the services we're defining tonight, that's what we've worked towards in creating this Request for Proposals for your consideration. And so what we see some of the other benefits likely is that, we understand people find this as a best practice. When they move into our community, there's an expectation that, hey, somebody's picking up my trash, I don't have to go out and negotiate and find that contract, because it's pretty common. We're not reinventing the wheel here in Lee Summit. Contracting residential trash service is common. Professional, uniformed, community trash service, I think that was one of the potential opportunities here. So there's consistency throughout our neighborhoods and the community. Obviously, reducing costs, we won't know that, but that is a real opportunity to reduce costs for all of our residents. Diminishing pavement damages and road repair costs, this wasn't a primary benefit, but we have calculated benefits conservatively, you know, $500,000 to $800,000 a year in annual savings to pavement damages. No matter if we have Amazon trucks, FedEx trucks, and trash trucks, anytime you can reduce the number of trash trucks, if you've got six haulers going down a street, that's 12 trash trucks going down that same street, if you can reduce that down to two for just one hauler working in that neighborhood, it's going to have an incremental impact to those road conditions. An impact that reduces the amount of maintenance activity we have to perform on that road. There are other hauler efficiencies that you could imagine might happen with this opportunity. There's increased recycling rates, reduced noise impacts in neighborhoods by just having fewer trucks, less fuel use and emissions, improved neighborhood aesthetics, and that's what we're talking about, really the look of a neighborhood as opposed to having trashcans out every day of the week. You have a day of the week where that neighborhood has its collection services happening. Fewer trucks, in general, just has a safety impact. Anytime, again, you can incrementally reduce the amount of truck volume in your neighborhoods, you're going to have an incremental improvement in safety. We do think that there would be an opportunity to improve customer services, where the city then has a contract it can leverage to enforce those provisions of customer service. We can assure guaranteed service for all residents in Lee Summit. Additional recycling and service option opportunities. Really, this is reliant on how we develop that RFP. Now, we could guarantee the opportunity for recycling and other services that perhaps they're not able to bear in the market because of affordability, or just choice options that aren't being marketed to that particular homeowner. Increased waste collection accountability and transparency, that would be imposed by our contract management. Improve air quality, haulers' financial reliability, this secured business investment, as you look at the term that we're proposing, it allows a contractor, whether it's be a small, local loan business, or a large business, to expand their operation and grow within Lee Summit to meet the demands of the contract that's proposed. Could be conditional covered load and litter enforcement, now that we have a contract to impose those types of fines on the contractor that is working on behalf of the city. Other solid waste, environmental programs, public education, potential debris management, a lot of these things we considered in the development of the proposal. Then we came back in another subsequent work session, after the council unanimously said keep proceeding, to develop an engagement plan. How were we going to engage the private sector, the haulers, our consultants, HOAs, residents? And we laid out a timeline and a plan to execute. We then also got direction from the City Council unanimously, submit the two-year notice. Staff worked with legal, prepared that required statutory two-year notice, which essentially says from the date we issue that notice, and we sought commitment from you all at that time before we proceeded, and we had that commitment, that once we issued that notice, we would have a two-year period to work through an RFP, select a contractor, if you want to select one. You could walk away too, if you find that it isn't a good value proposition, it doesn't meet the services or the costs that you expect. But you have that two-year period where that notice occurs. And then you have a one-year period after the conclusion of that two years to actually implement a change. And so you've issued that notice of intent, really the exploration of this change of service, from subscription service to a contracted service. And then we began working with the Public Works Committee to assemble all the feedback we had throughout that engagement plan, and I'll go through this engagement plan a little more thoroughly, so you have a better awareness of what all that we did, to develop the Request for Proposals that's before you tonight and in your packet for review, and with your general consensus, we would then advertise that and all lay out the next steps. And so, again, this is common. We reached out as part of the engagement plan to look at best practices. We reviewed this with our solid waste consultant, who has done a number of contracted solid waste residential plans. We know that it's common across the country, it's common to contract in the state of Missouri, and it's common in our metropolitan area with more communities that contract than have a subscription service. Whether you look at it by agency, or you look at it by population, any way you slice this, it is more popular being a majority that contract than that don't contract. So we're not reinventing the wheel here when it comes to Lee Summit's proposal, your initiative to consider contracting residential solid waste. Then we sought out HOAs, and I believe there's over 140 HOAs that we sent letters to, we sent out surveys trying to get feedback. It's not the survey saying, do you like this, do you not like this? But they were surveys for us to help develop an RFP. And that was the same kind of questionnaire you saw if you attended some of the other meetings. It's, do you contract as an HOA? What kind of services do you offer with your contract as an HOA? What are the prices that you've contracted for as an HOA? And we got a lot of good feedback from those HOA conversations that we had. And this is important, too. So we have about 36,000, 37,000 households in Lee Summit. And this whole initiative only applies to those that are residential households, it doesn't apply to apartments, it does not apply to commercials, so all those hauler services for apartments and for commercial still would continue their business in Lee Summit. It also, as we frame this, and you'll see, the number of HOAs with contracts is about a third of our community. So, whether that be, I guess we're at about 10,000, 12,000 of our households, of the 36,000 households, contract. And we're proposing that they be allowed to continue contracting. And so there are a lot of service providers, a lot of haulers of all varieties. And so, there are a lot of service providers, a lot of haulers of all varieties that are currently serving your HOAs in the community that would be allowed to continue to earn that business, or they could change hauler service providers, so long as that HOA's contract goes uninterrupted, being that they don't choose to opt into the city. We wouldn't allow the opting in and then opting out and opting in. There has to be some security for a city contractor to understand their customer base. So, we're talking about two-thirds of the city, not the entire city, being under a residential curbside service contract. We also reached out to the industry, all the haulers that are operating here in Lee Summit. I believe there's nine, 10 residential haulers that are operating in Lee Summit. Most of them already do commercial as well, so they do a blend of commercial and residential hauling. Anyone that would be willing to talk to us, we gather their feedback on what to include and basic services, contract provisions, what their interests were, and we tried to hold those stakeholder dialogue meetings with them. We then had informational meetings, one in each council district. Many of you attended those meetings. And what we found interesting here is that of the feedback we got in person during the meetings, and we didn't get as much in-person feedback, the handwritten comment cards as we did online, but those that were at the meetings and filled out the handwritten comments, it was almost 50/50 for and against. There was hundreds of online submitted comments, and the overwhelming majority of those were opposed. The only statistically valid survey we did was a citizen survey. So, all the handwritten comments, those were solicited from people who showed up or people who were getting messages that said, go out here and support their cause, whether that was for or against. The only statistically valid survey we had was a citizen, citywide survey that occurred a little over a year ago where we asked a question about trash priorities. And overwhelmingly, you can see here by the margins on the sheet in front of you, 84% the number one priority, the number one issue was cost. And I think most reasonable people would acknowledge that. Then it's the availability of services, really, the reliability and timeliness of service, the ability to choose was on down the list at a 31%. That being their priority. And so, we did get a lot of good feedback from these neighborhood meetings. Again, opposed was just as valuable as for because it helped shape this RFP. We wanted to know what they didn't like about it, not just that it was, you know, a freedom, a right to choose, but what they didn't like about it was very helpful. And then we formed a solid waste task force. You all approved a resolution for this body, and their purpose was to help staff really assimilate all of the feedback we had gotten. So, it's a stakeholder feedback. It's the HOA feedback. It's the feedback we got from residents during these informational meetings. And for them to say, yeah, we're on the right track. This is the request for proposals. This is the scope of services that we believe the community wants. And they advised staff. They didn't report to the city council. They didn't render a recommendation to you. And all of that dialogue that we received in those meetings was presented to the Public Works Committee. Again, it's what shaped the RFP. It's what you see in your packets right now. So, we worked then with the Public Works Committee over multiple meetings. We had a lot of good conversation. We had some questions. We had come back with some different solutions. And what they had said together was, let's advance this RFP to the full council. Basically, they did their job. The Public Works Committee did a great job in delivering this request for proposals, and I'm going to ask Mr. Anderson to come forward and go through that request for proposal a little more detail on what those terms, the scope of services, some of the liquidated damages are. And then I'll come back at that point and kind of wrap this up with our next steps, what to expect moving forward.
Hey, good evening. Mike Anderson, Deputy Director of Public Works Operations. So, yeah, let's talk about the RFP, and really, these are the key components of the RFP. These are the things that make up or will make up the contract. And as Michael alluded to, this was really put together using all the comments that we heard along the way. What are the things that we need to address in order to be successful should we decide to go forward with this? So, a lot of this you've already heard, but I just want to just kind of reiterate. So, who's impacted? Obviously, residential services or residential homes that are currently serviced with a poly cart at the curbside. So, if you're an apartment complex and you're using dumpsters or trash compactors, you're not impacted. Commercial is not impacted. It's only residents that put poly carts at the curb. We did mention HOA contracts. You know, if an HOA is in a contract, they're satisfied with that contract, we are totally on board with them letting them remain in that contract. I mean, that service services our needs. That helps them bring their costs down, keeps trucks off the roads. It's a win-win, and they can manage that. And so, good on the HOAs for, you know, for getting that done, and we certainly don't want to interfere with that. There again, we don't want them bouncing in and out. We've got to maintain some level of consistency for our contractor. Individual residents obviously cannot opt out. If we allowed individual residents to opt out, that would really defeat the whole purpose of the contract hauler. The initial term would be a five-year contract with up to three two-year renewals. So, the, you know, if you have a good contractor and things are going well, you know, the maximum that they could be in that is 11 years before we would have to reissue an RFP and start this process again. As for the costs, we will lay out the services required and will require the contractor through the RFP to propose a cost. Now, that cost would be that starting price in July 27 is as soon as we could do that. Annual increases would be based on the CPI or 4%, whichever's lower. So, it will be controlled. They can't just get in the contract and then double the cost and say, ha-ha, gotcha. It doesn't, it's not going to work that way. So, if CPI is 2%, there'll be a 2% increase. If CPI is 6%, there'll be a 4% increase. So, what's included? What do we want to include in this service? So, obviously, the solid waste, and this will be weekly, weekly trash collection, curbside, weekly recyclables, curbside, weekly yard waste, and quarterly bulky item pickups. 10 bags on the yard waste, and that would be either bags or bundles or a combination thereof. We did want to propose an amnesty week. I know my house at Christmas, the day after, is a mess, so we will have an amnesty week that up to four bags or boxes of trash outside the containers that the hauler would be required to pick up, and as well as live or at that time, dead Christmas trees, not artificial, but, you know, trees that people had in their homes and you put out on the curb, and they would be able to have those picked up as part of the basic service. We did not want to go down the path of the extra bags and tags and selling tags in grocery stores for extra bags. That's just not, that was not popular by, the haulers didn't like it, our survey respondents didn't like that, so we didn't go down that path. There can be, if, there's no maximum on the number of carts. If you have a big family and you've got five kids and 195 gallon carts not enough, you can have two. There would be a fee for that. Initially, we would go out with a 95 gallon trash and a 95 gallon recycle. Residents would be able to initially reach out to our contractor and say, you know, I don't really want a 95, 65 is fine with me. Frankly, I don't recycle. I don't even want a recycle cart. Just give me a 165 gallon trash can and I'll put everything in there. You're not required to have the two if you don't want. There would be, you know, we might be kind of guessing a little bit with some families, you know, do I need a 95? Do I need a 65? There'd be a six-month kind of transitional period where people could change their bin size at no cost. We did provide for a, or do want to provide for a snowbird service. So, if you're fortunate enough, you can go to Florida or Arizona for three or four months in the winter and say goodbye to the snow. You can suspend your service for that time for a minimum of three months and a maximum of nine months. We did not want to include at-your-door service as an option as part of the contract requirements, but they are required to provide reasonable accommodations for those with disabilities. So, if there's a family that cannot get their trash can to the curb for some reason, it would be up to the contractor to work with that family individually and work out a reasonable One of the other things we talked about and wanted to do was a senior discount. So, that would be kind of self-reported from the property owner. If you can provide documentation that that property is under the property tax freeze with Jackson County, that there would be a reduced price for that property owner. Bulky item pickups, I did mention there would be quarterly as part of the base service, but there would be an option to get more if people needed that service. And one of the questions we had along the way was, do we want to include a kind of an emergency management provision within the contract? You know, if we have a storm, a tornado, and we're looking to, you know, for debris removal, do we want to make that part of this contract? And we opted not to do that, but obviously, that might be something that could be negotiated if we find ourselves in that emergency situation. I kind of talked about the containers a little bit, got ahead of myself, but again, there'd be two sizes, 65 and 95. It was pretty well unanimous from the haulers to stay away from the 35 gallon containers. They're very problematic for the automated equipment. Again, we would be able to let residents mix and match different sizes, different numbers, no maximum number and no minimum number. As far as aesthetics, just the basic black containers, trash would be a black lid, recycle would be a blue lid. We did want a QR code on the back of those containers, and that would be so people can, you know, if, when is my pickup? Or, you know, what day of the week is my pickup? If the weather's bad, can I, it's really take you to an website that would be updated if there's weather conditions, hauler can't get out. They put notifications out there, information about the routes, information about what you can and cannot put in your recycle bin, all those kind of things. My wife was asking me last night, can I put bubble wrap in a recycle? I'm like, I'm not really sure. So, I had to look it up. As far as the containers, the containers, we did talk in Public Works Committee, can we utilize some of the existing containers that are out there? They're in good shape. Can we just use those? And that conversation, you know, the problem is, city doesn't own those, property owners don't own those. Those are owned by the individual haulers that are hauling. So, we would give that opportunity for the haulers to pick up their containers, and as part of our contract, we will provide all-new containers to all residences. So, there'd be that uniformity and look and feel, and everything would be new and fresh. Those would be, become part of the, I guess, owned by the city at the end. I say owned by the city, but in reality, they kind of belong to that property. You know, that house, that trash can would belong to that house. So, if somebody moves, they don't have to take their can with them. It just stays there in the garage until the next family comes and it's there, ready to roll. And also, if we, you know, we thought if we change contractors, you know, five years down the road, that's the initial term, we didn't want to have to go through the exercise of picking up all those cans and then making new cans. Let's just stick with the ones we have. So, those would be, that's kind of the plan with the cans. Current transition, or the planned transition, like I said, haulers would be given the opportunity to pick up their carts. The new contractor would deliver carts no sooner than two weeks before the initial pickup, and then unwanted carts, and we know there's going to be some, would be picked up by the city and reused, repurposed, recycled. We've already had conversations in the recycle market, and there is a market for those. Customer service, obviously, that's a huge concern in, obviously, with the, you know, how are we going to manage, you know, we get a bad contractor who's not providing the services that we want for our residences, how are we going to deal with that? So, and we're going to get into a lot of that details when we talk about some of the expectations. But customer service will be the responsibility of the hauler. That is not going to be city. We're not going to hire customer service representatives and, you know, and increase staff, like Michael said. Again, billing and account management is being done by the hauler. The city's not going to touch any of the money. The city's not going to add any administrative fees on whatever the haulers propose in their contracts. We're not adding staff. We're not buying equipment. This is 100% on the hauler. So, there's no financial benefit to anybody in the city for doing this, aside from, you know, hopefully, a financial benefit to all our residents with a lower cost, which we firmly believe we'll see. Some of the other topics within the RFP will be that performance criteria. Again, that's that customer service. What do we expect? And how are we going to make sure we see that? I'm going to kind of gloss over the liquidated damages, but that's also in the contract. There will be, you know, damages to the city, you know, if they don't meet some of these expectations, there may be damages to residents, and there has to be a way to recover those damages. Obviously, standard contract provisions as far as insurance, subcontracting, submittals, bonding. Within the RFP, we do kind of, we define how that hauler will be selected, what's the criteria, what are we going to look at, and how are we going to weight that? And then the process. So, before I move on to getting into the performance criteria, is there any questions at this point?
Keep going, sir.
Okay, I'll keep going. Perfect. So, performance criteria. There again, I don't want to focus in on the liquidated damages. This is not, they're not put in there as a moneymaker. We're hoping that we never have to collect liquidated damages from a contractor throughout the life of the contract. If we are, that means things aren't going well, and that's not what we want. These are in here purely as an incentive to make sure that they are meeting the expectations of this contract. And if they're not, these kind of service the teeth within the contract to make sure they straighten up. So, some of them are obvious, state, federal, and local regulations, obviously, they must be followed. Failure to clean up leakage, any leakage or spills or trash on the roadway, and we fight that now with haulers, you know, hydraulic lines break, and we get report of, you know, of an issue out on the street, they'll be expected within one business day to go out there and clean that up. Failure to maintain their vehicles. We expect the vehicles to be maintained in a safe, healthy way. They're not leaking fluids. They're not dripping trash. They're not, you know, leaking hydraulic fluid along the road. And if they are, you know, they'll be penalized until they get that fixed. Unfortunately, when you got big trash trucks on residential streets, it's not, doesn't happen often, but it can happen, some property damage, somebody, car gets nicked, a mailbox gets hit. We expect that when that happens, that the property owner is notified, that the city is notified, and that there's some resolution or they're working towards a resolution within seven days. Failure to provide probably weekly, monthly, or annual reports. We need to know what's going on with our contractor. We need to see what complaints are you getting? We want a log of complaints. We want a log of how those complaints were resolved. We want a log of missed collections, and were those missed because they were inappropriate setouts, or why were those missed? If there's a change in the routing, if there's a change in their plan in any way, we need to be aware of that. Missed collection, this is one that obviously affects residences directly. If a home is missed, if they've got 24 business hours to make sure they pick that up, or we're going to give the residents a free month of service. So, get, don't miss the pickups. Failure to provide collection services with specific hours. We define the standard hours as 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. We don't want you out there before 7:00 AM. We don't want you out there after 7:00 PM. So, manage your trucks, manage your staff, manage your routes so that you can get things done before 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM. Failure to perform proper billing. So, obviously, for the most part, some of the comments are right, people would be paying the same rate. But if you're paying for, if you're getting an extra cart or an extra bulky item pickup or whatever, and somehow you're mis-billed, you've got, you know, two business days to get that squared up with the resident. We expect the carts to be maintained in proper working order. We want them to look good. We want them to function properly. We don't want the lids falling off of them. And if you do, you've got 10 days to get that fixed, switch out that cart. We expect carts to be put down in the right place and not knocked over. There again, we're not going to be following the trash trucks around in a city vehicle and trying to count every, you know, if one knocks over, oh, I got you, there's 50 bucks. That's not the point. But the point is, if we drive down a street and we see half of them are laying over and there's a systemic problem that a company's not caring, they're just picking them up and throwing the carts, that's a problem. And that's when- And that's when, you know, we're going to start to implement some of the teeth. Placing material in the container is not designated for that material, we're paying for trash service, we're paying for recycling, we don't want to see recycling going in the trash truck. We don't want to see recycling going to a landfill, that's a problem. And if it is, we're going to, you know, have to correct that immediately. Failure to provide updated routes, they need to keep us updated, and our customer service folks, frankly, with the routes, because even though they are the first point of contact for customer service, we know we're going to get calls. People will call the city, and we get that, and we need to be informed. If somebody calls in and says, hey, they missed our whole street, and we're not aware that they changed the route, oh, I'm sorry, they changed the route from Tuesday to Wednesday, somehow that information didn't get to you, and then we need to figure out why not, but we need to be aware. Failure to leave an educational tag, so I mentioned, you know, missed pickup, sometimes a missed pickup is just that, they miss a pickup, we kind of expect some of that would be addressed in a big way with a contract hauler. You've got someone driving down the street, they pick up every can, it's hard to miss it. Right now, you've got, I know in my street, two different companies pick up on the same day, so you see a can, well, maybe, or maybe you're supposed to pick it up, and so it's understandable that those mistakes happen. But sometimes, you know, they may not pick up a can because it's an inappropriate setout, maybe there's trash in the recycle, and they don't want to pick it up, maybe there's something in yard waste bags that's not supposed to be in there. So, if for some reason, the hauler makes a conscious decision not to pick up a can, they've got to put a tag on it explaining to the resident why this was not picked up. It's an educational thing, so it doesn't continue to happen. Obviously, we specify the carts, we expect those carts to be what's delivered. Response to customer complaints, again, customer complaints should go directly to the hauler, and they have eight business hours to respond to that complaint. Right now, there's, we have, nobody has any kind of teeth or control over their response. Some companies are great, some companies are not so great, and we hear about them, but there's not a lot we can do about it. But with this contract, we could. Failure to report documented complaints, again, we need to hear what's going on from our residents, if they're, you know, we're getting a lot of complaints about this particular item, what's going on, how do we work with our contractor to make sure we get that resolved? And then some of the big ones, hopefully, we'll never get here, but if for some reason an entire route's not picked up, you know, on the day it's supposed to, that's, or the day after, that's a major problem, you know, if we miss a whole subdivision. Or if they're not picking up 95% of all the routes for like a three-day run, there's something going on, and we need to address that. That's a pretty big fine, hopefully, that's not something we'd ever talk about, and we have to address initially, you know, immediately. And there again, disposing of recycled material, you know, if they take the recycle truck and they take it to the landfill and dump it, we can't do that, that's not the service we're paying for. Again, some of the other topics within the RFP, all the standard stuff, you know, the standard conditions, insurance bonds, no collusion, acceptable bids, you know, that could be, it could be from one company, it could be from a group of companies that form an LLC, it can be however they want to do it. At this point in time, all we're doing is really talking about sending out a request for proposal, so we can see who's interested, and if they are, what those prices would be, and how they would set up for those services. And then, once we have that information, now we can start getting into, how do we evaluate that, you know, evaluate those proposals and make a decision? So, obviously, some of those requirements, you have to be able to be insured, you have to be bonded, you have to be licensed. If you don't have those things, and you can't get those things, sorry, you're done, and we're not even going to look at your proposal. 20% is that experience and qualifications, so where else are you doing these kind of contracts? Who else are you servicing? What's the experience and qualifications of the personnel that are running your company? That would be 20%. 30% on the proposed approach, we lay out, here's the expectations, here's the customer service expectations, how are you going to set up your customer service center? Are you doing local staff on site? Are you farming this out to a third party? Not going to be a high score if you do that. So, we look at that, how many trucks are you setting up? How are you going to set up your routes? How are you going to make sure you're picking up all these routes in between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m.? What happens if you have a truck breakdown? What's your backup plan? I want to see, within that proposed approach, how are you going to do this, and how are you going to be successful? Not only for when everything's going right, but when things go wrong, what's your plan B? And then, 50% for cost. We saw that in the citizen survey, it was overwhelming, the number-one thing is cost. So, that, yeah, that takes a big, that's a big weight of the decision, but it's not all the decision, it's half. So, if you've got someone that you don't feel is confident that they can meet the expectations, that their experience and qualifications aren't up there, they may not be the number-one rated company, even with a low price. So, at that point, you know, what this, what that process would look like, you know, city staff typically, and we can talk about this, if you guys want to handle this in some different way, but typically, city staff would go through and evaluate, make a recommendation to the city council, probably in closed session, so that there can be open discussion. And then ultimately, city council will make a decision on, okay, here's the RFPs, here's who applied, here's the cost, is this a good thing for this city? If it is, then you make a decision to move forward, if it's not, then we make the decision to say, you know what, this isn't the deal we thought it would be, and we walk away. So, with that, is there any questions at this point before we kind of wrap things up?
Yeah, are you going to talk about the document in there that's contract prices?
So, yeah, I'll mention that too. So, I believe that the RFP that was just described by Mr. Anderson, the scope of services are what the community and the feedback and what Public Works Committee thought, that is what we desire. The next step would be to issue the RFP, and we think that we're going to achieve those initial goals, as I kind of kicked this off with, of reducing price, good services, and better neighborhoods. And we believe really the price point could be real, but we don't know until we get a competitive market bid on the proposed services. It seemed like you agreed on the services, I haven't had any feedback yet on the LDs or some of the other provisions of the RFP, which is pretty common. We actually modeled this RFP after the city of Warrensburg, the contracts, and those LDs and different provisions were taken from that. So, we're not reinventing the wheel in this whole process, right? This is a common approach to contract, and we pulled from another city nearby, you know, Warrensburg that contracts, and that's where a lot of this was developed. But we believe that the prices could be cheaper, because in our survey responses and our research with our HOA's End Lease Summit that contract, the average contract price for these very similar services, comparing apples to apples, is about $19 a month. And we're also familiar with what other cities are contracting, for these exact kind of apples-to-apple services.
Are you going to put that on the screen?
I can, yeah, that's in the packet. And those, kind of the average of communities that contract is about $22 a month. So, this is the information that's in your packet. This is really the foundation of our understanding of why we believe we could save money for residents, but we don't know. This just tells us that that kind of buying power of an HOA, or the buying power of a contract for a larger community, provides value to residents in the matter of reduced prices for the same services that they're getting, right? It's still including trash, recycling, yard waste, every week throughout the year, and some sort of scheduled bulky item pickup. Those are the basic services that Mr. Anderson covered. And so, we won't know, though, until we issue the RFP, if really we have consensus that this is the RFP, the design that you think is what our community's asking for, we put it out on the streets, we see what the market bids, and then we evaluate that. And as Mr. Anderson said, we'll be evaluating price, we'll be evaluating their experiences, their approach, you know, whether there's any local preferences or approach strategies that you like more so than others, and if you don't feel like it's a great value proposition, as Mr. Anderson said, you can walk away. If it doesn't meet your expectations, you can walk away. So, that's in the packet. We also have in the package, just for awareness, really all those RFP provisions that Mr. Anderson covered, the scope of services, the LDs, we also have a list of other communities that contract, just for your awareness and where those numbers come from, but.
Michael, real quick.
Oh, leave that other one on the screen, the overhead.
Oh, yeah.
So, you mentioned, just in the, Mr. Anderson listed, the liquidated damages and mentioned a bond, what are we going to have a requirement in there for that bond? I mean, that was a significant number, if they hit three or four of those things, what would you set that bond at?
I mean, the bond would be really a performance bond, so that if they're not performing, that we can call the bond company to get somebody else in here to perform those services, because obviously, we couldn't go without trash collection service, if for some reason, they just walked away.
But would we have to put a dollar amount on that bond?
We would, and yeah, we'd have to figure out what that bond amount is, I don't know off the top of my head what that bond amount would be, but, you know, enough that we can get a contractor in here to continue those services.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you. As far as the startup costs for something like this, of a contractor getting all the, or would the city purchase the carts or the contractor?
The way it's proposed is contractor would supply the carts and provide an inventory for surplus, for replacement, and then maintenance.
Okay, so like the startup costs for getting their billing system in place, providing all those carts and all that, is that sort of baked into the contract? Like, they have to front those costs, but they know they'll make it up over time by having this multi-year contract?
They would, that's why, in discussion with the haulers, I think there's that preference for a minimum five-year contract with several renewals, so that they can capitalize those assets over the term of their contract.
Okay, that makes sense. Are we looking for any opinions at this point, Mayor?
Yeah, we can, go ahead and pull your presentation back. Were you going to go through the timeline again? Okay, so, we're at this point, we're reviewing whether to send it out to the RFP, so that we can see what kind of contracted prices we could get.
Yeah, if we feel that's the general direction, yes, that's where we would proceed next. Kind of those next steps would be, we would advertise soon, here within the next two weeks, possibly three, you know, if there's any legalities we've got to work through with regard to buttoning that up for advertisement. It would be out throughout the holiday season, it would open kind of very early in January, tentatively, we're talking about January 9th potentially as an opening. Obviously, we'd have to see how the responses come in, if kind of any questions we need to respond to during that period. Then the city council would review all of those, as was alluded to earlier, that review and consideration where you can have open debate on all of those proposals that have been received might be done in closed session, but then everything be made public for transparent, everybody could see what those proposals are, if that's your direction to contract or not contract, we can make a decision on that at a future time when you have all the information available.
Councilmember Shields?
Thank you. I guess as far as the RFP goes, I really appreciate what's in it, the constituents that I heard from, like the services that they were concerned about, obviously, trash, recycling, yard waste, bulky pickup is, I'm really glad to see that in there. I'm glad to see all the kind of, the provisions that you thought out about guaranteeing service and the penalties if it's not provided in timely manner, so making sure that those major services were included and that everything is done on time, like those are the concerns that I heard from people, so I really appreciate that. Obviously, I want to see when this RFP comes back, what the actual prices are, to make sure that we are getting a good deal for our constituents. I like that HOAs have the ability to opt out, so if they're getting a better deal, that they don't have to switch over, but if they can get a better deal through the city contracting, then they may want to switch. So, I would like to see this continue to move forward in the process, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, the next step is the second bullet point, which is advertise for competitive proposals. That's really all we're committing to at this point?
Correct, that's all we're looking for, is to make sure we're on the right track. We're definitely not asking for, you know, a decision, we're not asking for that to contract or not contract tonight.
Okay. Discussion, councilmember Pryor?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in favor of moving forward with the RFP, I think it's important in order to make an informed decision that we have the pricing in front of us, so I would be in favor of moving forward to at least see the pricing, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rader?
Thank you, Mayor. When we embarked on this, and I'm on the Public Works Commission, when we embarked on this, I voted to embark on it, because I thought that it was something that the council had put out as an initiative, and I was open to hear what the staff would come up with, and they've worked very hard on this, and basically, what, you know, I didn't, wasn't prepared for the public response, but I would say that since we've been going through this, there's been a lot of public response, and it's not just a certain group of people that are responding. I'm getting a lot of emails, and I think other council members are as well, getting a lot of emails that are opposed to the trash, and to the citywide trash. And some of the things that they've said, and you all know this, is that people want choices, and they want control over their personal trash service, they want competition, and they want free enterprise. And I feel like that, with all due respect to our council and our staff, that clearly people are upset about it, they are unhappy about it, and I feel like that we may be making decisions without prioritizing the interests of our citizens. So, I'm not going to vote that we continue to move forward on this. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Carlisle?
Thank you, Mayor. I would echo what councilmember Shields said, I don't think we can make a good decision for our community until we have all of the information in front of us to make, and we aren't there yet, so I would support moving forward, thank you.
Thank you. And councilmember Pryor, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Other discussion? I mean, I want to see what price we get, so it's not quite consensus, but.
I feel like.
Mayor Pacheco Lopez?
Mayor, I mean, obviously, we are not making a decision whether we want to do this universal trash service. This was a priority that was set by citizens in the strategic plan, we're not approving this tonight, I'm not in support of this tonight, but I think we owe it to all of us just to investigate. If it's, if we get better pricing, great, if we don't, this is not going to work.
Stop, please.
So, I think we should all just respect each other, that's all, and, but no one's advocating for this, I definitely am not, for the record, but I think because we started a process, there's been a lot of time and energy put into this, I think we should probably complete the process, and that's it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I appreciate your feedback tonight, I think it's been very helpful.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's go to the next presentation from our, on the agenda, Agenda Item 7C.
Are you going to vote? We want to see a vote.
There's no vote tonight.
I'll tell her. There's not going to be a vote tonight, they're going to go get bids, yes. We'll see what the prices come out to be, comes back to council, we look at the proposals, we decide as a council whether we want to move forward, we can push pause at that time, there's all kinds of things we can do at that time, but we don't have a price at this point, and are we going to finish what we started a year ago or not?
Can I speak?
No, no.
Record and vote, so we can try to get any stand?
No, this isn't your meeting to run, this is our meeting to run. I will let councilmember Hodges, I will let her speak, go ahead, councilmember Hodges.
So, I just want to say some-
So I just want to say something, you know, we get responses from both sides. Just because of who shows up tonight doesn't mean it's the only voice. We get a lot on the phone calls, we get a lot of emails. I appreciate every single one of them. We're not up here to decide tonight. I know that's what you were expecting. But I just need to say that I've been super disappointed in this community and some of the businesses in our community because it's been super disrespectful, and we've been very respectful as far, every time I get a phone call or an email, I respond, hey, thank you so much for reaching out. I appreciate it. I don't have to agree with it or disagree with it, but I just appreciate the fact that you're taking the time to do it and to show up tonight. All I'm asking is for some respect back because, you know, we've got people like, companies like KC Disposal who wants to send out emails about specific council members and spread things and be very divisive in our community, and things like that are just extremely disrespectful. And I lose a lot of respect for companies and people like that because you're spreading lies. And if you want to have a conversation, my number is on the website, and I would love to have conversation. So just give us enough respect to do that because we do actually enjoy that. And I do want to hear from the community. I'm being honest, I don't have my mind made up because, like a lot of others said, with any issue, trash, anything, I want to know all of the facts. That's our job, is to gather every bit of facts before we make a decision. We need to make well-informed decisions. It may be no. Great. But you know what? And I may be in the minority, or I may be in the majority. I don't know. But all I'm asking is for the same respect back because it's been very, very disappointing. So I know we're better than that, and that's all I'm asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you. So I just wanted to kind of piggyback off of that also. I've had numerous people call me, yell at me, tell me I'm a socialist, I'm a communist, and then turn around and ask me to please side with them and vote the way that they want me to vote. And my mind's not made up. There's so much information that we haven't received yet. But I will say that it's very discouraging to have specific companies send out false emails full of lies and divide our community and intentionally turn people against each other and attack people. An email went out today attacking a specific council member who has been very nice and has responded to every email and taken every phone call. And we're doing our best. We're doing the best that we know what to do, how to do. And I'm sorry if that's not good enough, but we owe it to everyone in our city to get all of the information. And that goes for letting, even KC Disposal and everyone here tonight, that goes for everyone sending in their proposals. We owe it to them to give everyone a chance, and that's what we're going to do. We're going to review it, and if it doesn't make sense, we won't vote for it. But at least give us time and give us the respect, please. Thank you.
All right, thank you. With that, Deputy Chief, I appreciate you're ready to present, but I'm going to take a recess. And if everybody wants to stick around and talk about chickens, then that's next on the agenda.
Ever wondered how the city budget works? The total 2026 budget is over $380 million, which includes funding for daily operations, capital improvements, debt service, internal service, and enterprise operations. For example, the general fund is the foundation for the city's day-to-day services and investments like road maintenance, public safety, and fire protection. The general fund is supported by property taxes, sales taxes generated by local businesses, franchise taxes, and other sources like licenses, permits, and fees. For every dollar citizens paying property tax, the city receives 18 cents. This means the city receives $845 a year in property taxes for a median single-family house. These taxes provide public safety, park maintenance, infrastructure, and the best services to keep Leesum going and improving. One of the community's top priorities is infrastructure investment, which is reflected in the capital improvement plan. $113 million of the 2026 budget is invested into the capital improvement plan. The 2026 capital improvement budget includes investments like the 291 and 50 highway interchange, Third Street, Warden-Purcell's intersection, and Prior Road. The budget process includes guidance from the city council, citizen input, and critical success factors from the city's Ignite strategic plan. To learn more about the city's budget, visit cityofls.net/budget.
When the person called on the phone, she said that there was a dinosaur walking down her road. Of course, we had to go out and check that out. We get out there, and it was a big African tortoise, probably 60 pounds, walking down the road. And they walked, they really stand up tall, so I could see why she thought it was a dinosaur. I'm Rodney Wagner. I'm the manager of Leesum Animal Control. So as you can see, we get all sorts of animals here. You have some guinea pigs off to the side. All the windows up here are animals that are adoptable right now. Every one of these dogs is ready to go and ready for adoption. And the same thing with our cats over here. A lot of cool cats in here now, so. So this is our three-acre lot we have out back, and this is where we do all the walking of dogs, exercise. We also have a side yard off to the side over there, so we can let them run loose. They can run together, and then we have what's called play groups. Kind of like having a bunch of kids. Here's our vet room. We have a vet that comes out twice a week. This is our Sally Port where we bring the animals into. This is one of our animal control trucks, and we can hold up to six animals. We have a lift on the other side to put big animals in. We actually have temperature gauges in here and in the truck to tell how hot it is. Once it gets to a certain temperature, we bring all the animals back here immediately. So this actually has traps in it, but we do a lot of wildlife trapping. I mean, a lot. So bats, pot-bellied pigs, horses, cows, emus, a lot of reptiles. We had a citizen one time that had over 200 reptiles in his basement. Caymans and alligators in here that are four or five feet long, you can't keep those. And people do, and they're surprised when they can't keep them. I'm like, really? You're surprised you can't have an alligator in your house? Our main goal here is public safety and also the safety of the animals. And we have very dedicated people back there, and they definitely stay here for the love of the animals, which also includes getting them adopted out. We'll have about 4,000 impounded animals a year, probably about close to 2,000 are dogs and cats. The cats and dogs, when they get impounded here, they go on a five-day hold, and then after the five days, if the owner doesn't show up, then we can put them up for adoption. Adopt a animal here is actually really simple. You just come in, look for whatever animal you're looking for, find the right pick. You have to go to the adoption room up there and see if you get along with them, spend as much time as you want to in there. From that point on, it's just a matter of making sure they're spay or neutered, and all their vaccinations up at par, and they're good to go. We have a very high adoption rate because we try everything our power to get animals adopted out. We have Heart of America, a humane society that we do a lot of adoptions through. And then we also have other groups. We have some people that literally will just look all over the country for somewhere for a dog to go, and we sent dogs up into South Dakota, North Dakota, Washington State. So it's actually, it's a huge united effort to get all these animals home.
Tarzan's got lots of energy. Hazel's got a weird smile. Bellbell, she wants nothing to do with the other cats. She'll kind of get her grumpy face going.
And the good thing about the people here is that they get all their friends to get animals too. All of us have probably the limit of all the animals that we can have at home. You know, they are huge animal lovers. If it was up to the people here, we'd have 15 cats running around in here. We had a citizen one time out there, and he was bathing his two nine-foot-long boa constrictors in the front yard. Apparently, I was gardening some attention, and so we went out there and had him talk about that. Do I do this job? Oh, dude, I love this job. I grew up on a farm, and taking care of that many animals, you can't help but like animals. This is just like fancy farming. You know, you're just bringing the animals in here, taking care of them, and finding them homes, and yeah, absolutely animal lover.
This is the best place to work.
I love working here.
I feel very blessed.
I love it here.
I look forward to coming to work every day, being a part of this team.
Like a family away from home.
Where everyone feels like everybody knows their name.
The city that supports you. We see that with our benefits.
A pension, vacation days, job security.
Being able to be heard. We feel valued. We feel respected.
Leesum is a very progressive city.
It's growing, it's thriving.
We have this drive towards not just doing a job, but doing it with a spirit of excellence.
I had the opportunity to continue to grow regardless of 30-plus years doing this kind of work.
It's more than just dollars and cents.
We're here really to give back.
Providing a service to better a community.
To go out and serve people.
To be a part of something bigger than yourself. If I would have known what I know now, years ago, I would have been here much sooner.
Traditionally, we think as police officers, those responding to law enforcement needs within the community. But honestly, we are there to serve our citizens, and our citizens do go into crisis. They do have mental health crises, and we're being called to those scenes on a regular basis. In order to help serve those citizens better, we did initiate the Crisis Intervention Team program. These are officers that are specially trained to de-escalate crisis situations. Recently, we've brought co-responders onto the scene, licensed, qualified, mental health professionals housed within our police department, and they respond with those officers directly to those scenes where a crisis is occurring so they can interact with that citizen and get them the help they need right there on that scene.
The co-responders are either a bachelor or master level in a behavioral health-related field. They wear plainclothes. They don't carry weapons or anything like that.
I have a police radio that I listen to all day, listen for, you know, those key words, mental health, behavioral health, crisis.
There's a lot of officers that just call for me. I have my own radio number.
I also have the ability to self-dispatch to them and say, 982, inbound.
Officers inbound, 914.
So typically, I arrive after they've made it safe. I'll make contact and get kind of the rundown, and then I just kind of jump right in.
Like, hey, you know, my name's Allison. I'm a mental health professional. I'm here to help you. I'm not here to take you to jail or arrest you.
Sometimes, all a person needs is a voice, someone neutral, someone outside that, you know, can listen. I do a lot of safety planning, including family, their support network. Who's close to you? If they're home alone, who can come over and hang out with you today? Can we lock away your sharps? Can we put up your meds? Do you need meds? Can we get you over to the urgent care to get you assessed for your medications? Some of them also are like, oh, I'm so glad you came. This made me feel so much better.
Our main goal as co-responders is to, one, get people connected to the services that they need, and also divert from emergency rooms and jails.
And they almost get a different view of the police responding. That lets me know you care and the officers care.
Leesum, please, can we help you?
My husband has...
In 2020, we had 722 mental health-related calls for service. 2022, by that time, 1,479. These mental health-related calls for service are increasing. How we're responding to that is increasing the number of Crisis Intervention Team officers we have available, as well as the number of co-responders we have available to respond on these calls.
So what I think is important for the community to know about the co-responder program is that we're here, we exist. All you have to do when you call 911 is ask for us. You know, say, hey, I want a co-responder to respond to this crisis, and we'll go. I was really struggling about eight years ago. My personal journey with mental health, and I met some amazing social workers and amazing programs that have helped me get to where I am today. I really couldn't see myself doing anything else. We want to help, and that's what we love to do.
So at a client, we got a call, she had some suicidal ideations, and she really felt that she had nobody. And, you know, and getting to know her story, and getting to know who comes around and sees you. Well, then we found a support person, and they responded immediately, and we made a plan. I called back and checked on her in an hour, and then I checked on her in two hours. We were able to get her into additional services to where she talks to someone every week or more. I just took a person that really just thought they had nobody, and nobody would show up for them and show them you do. And you'll be amazed who is in your corner if you just simply say, I need a little help.
You can make the difference in somebody's life.
If you're trying to get in the fire, EMS service, Leesum is probably the top name.
On a daily basis, we are tasked with an incredible task. So we're trying to keep it a relaxed environment.
As a new person, you are constantly on edge, learning.
Morning will look typical, coming in, getting a report from the shift that's going off, get our truck checks done.
Our citizens trust us and believe in us by providing them many like our gear, our stations.
They build it to accommodate getting to a call, but also having a home. State-of-the-art weight equipment.
Individual bunk rooms.
Downtime areas.
Breakfast and dinners together.
Cook together. Get to know one another.
Train together.
Like a brother knows a brother, and a sister knows a brother. Banter back and forth. When the tones go off, they go to work.
We are here for 48 hours, so it can happen at any time. You can be in the gym, you can be in the middle of the night, you can be cooking.
Stop what you're doing and listen.
Wherever we are in the station.
People will stop what they're doing and listen, finding out which station it is.
What is the nature of the call?
EMS, the fire.
What apparatus?
Is it in my district?
Can be on the highway, northbound, southbound, westbound.
Am I assisting somebody?
Expectation.
What gear do I need?
Other lives involved. That adrenaline dump. Pants on, coats on, getting in the truck, we're mentally focused, geared up, paying attention to where we're going. Then we have a game plan that happens in the truck. The officer can give direction, and the dispatcher will update you. The officer will listen, the driver will listen. We get all in the same payday. When we get to the call, we can go to work. So many degrees of severity, structured fire, swift water rescue.
EMS.
Car accident.
Technical rescue.
Tac medic team. Equipment the fire department offers us is top-notch, from ring cutter to extrication equipment, state-of-the-art stuff, great trucks.
Tablet, Lucas device, battery-powered pot.
The right tools, the right training. The learning does not stop in the academy.
Building blocks continue, call after call, opportunities to grow. Started out as a firefighter, paramedic, moved to the rank of engineer, paramedic, most recently, the qualification of acting captain.
Firefighter, engineer, recently promoted to captain.
Promoted to paramedic since I've been here. I'll be honest, it's scary sometimes. You're the one back there. That person is having a bad day, and they're counting on you.
We practice these scenarios over and over. So when someone has an emergency, we can channel those energies, minimizing any more injury. We practice these scenarios over and over, so when someone has an emergency, we can channel those energies, minimizing any more injury. And then when it's over, we'll say, hey, how did we do? How is everyone doing? And we'll have frank conversations back at the station. The station assignment for us is a 48 on, 96 off.
The four days off is probably one of the greatest things ever.
We are bringing this meeting back to order. You know, I think I'll remember this night. I really, I think it's one of those nights that I'm just going to remember. I don't, I think it's good because I just remember nights like this when I first became mayor, and they just stressed me out, and I was telling Linda, is that your name? Loretta, Loretta. I should know that, Loretta, like Loretta Lynn, that I wouldn't have slept for a week after a night like tonight. And so I do feel for the two that spoke at the end because these nights can be hard. But now I've been in it long enough that I'm like, okay, I know I'm going to survive this. I just got to get through the night, right? So Deputy Chief Bunker, we are on agenda item 7C. This is the revision to Article 7, chickens of the City of Lee Summit Code of Ordinances. And Deputy Chief Bunker, thank you for sticking around as well.
My pleasure. So just a brief history here. So I know four council members were in on the initial discussion. My goal here in the next three to five minutes is to bring you up to speed with what they know, so you can make an informed, have an informed discussion and move forward. So with any further ado, on May 14th, that meeting was the CEDC meeting. Staff was asked to bring a presentation. Staff was directed to bring back to this meeting additional research on comparable cities, regulations for the full council to discuss. In an effort to share items discussed at the meeting with other, the other half of the council, like I mentioned before, and the mayor. So let's get started. Couple of key issues for consideration as you listen and then discuss. If Lee Summit increased the number of allowed chickens, what other city regulations should we adopt? Minimum lot size, greater separation from neighboring property or structures, permit requirements. Historically, in 2012, the council asked us to bring forward an urban chicken ordinance. In July, on July 11, 2013, that ordinance passed 5 to 3. At that time, the mayor didn't vote, so that's why it was a 5 to 3 vote. And that ordinance has remained unchanged since that time. And 2012, ordinances did not allow keeping, allow for keeping of chickens within 400 feet of the nearest residence. At that time, there were citizens of Lee Summit who wanted to keep small flocks of chickens for egg production primarily. Some of the key aspects of the discussions back at that time, 2012, 2013, were to allow six, up to six chickens, only hens, no roosters. Must be restrained at all times and secured inside a hen house during non-daylight hours, backyard only. Hen houses must be located 10 feet from the property line and 40 feet from adjacent buildings. They must maintain chickens in a clean environment with no foreseeable odors or excessive noise at the property boundary. Chicken manure or waste must be removed or stored securely with no more than three cubic feet of manure stored. Non-commercial use only. And allows, the current ordinance allows for the slaughter of chickens only within an enclosed area out of public view. This is common for, you know, same if you were to harvest a deer. Don't want it hung in the, we're not going to hang it in the front yard off the tray, so. Continuing with key aspects, guidelines for the enclosures are very specific within our ordinance. There's clear intention for animal welfare in regard to size and construction. Setbacks from property lines and dwellings were intentional to minimize complaints. So the research, the research was that six hens in the industry standard in Missouri. When an ordinance allows for more than six larger plots of land are required, the research found this to be very consistent across the state. Some of the research we brought back today includes this list. It was actually prepared, Deputy Director Amy Nassif with Development Services had, did this already on her own, anticipating that it would be asked, so we had, actually had this. So, but the overwhelming theme is that the six chickens, unless you see additional things such as larger acreage or plots. We can, I know a lot of this is in your packet. I'm going a little bit quick. I know you also have, within each of these cities, we gave you even more information as far as the breakdown to which were district, were they, how were they zoned, whether agricultural or residential. Missouri has no statutes governing the minimum sales or quantity of chickens. You can purchase fewer than four online, however, three to four is the minimum industry standard hatchery sell to the public. The minimums are based on logistics and profit. Chicks need each other to regulate their body temperatures during travel and as they grow. This likely contributes to the three to four standard quantities that we researched as far as sales go. Missouri, in 2024, House Bill was passed. This restricted HOAs from overriding our ordinance. And so with that restriction, they also set a minimum, I'm sorry, a maximum number of hens as well, and it is at six. David Hoffman, he's with Livestock Specialist with the University of Missouri Extension in Cass County. And he explains the state guideline in Missouri is six chickens per the two-tenth of an acre. I think that's fairly important. It kind of, it goes with that House Bill and the research that we've also uncovered with our neighboring cities. This is based on animal welfare, guidelines for most municipalities, standard chicken coop size. It also mitigates concerns with noise and waste, which are two primary complaints. Caught up here. On average, our animal control will respond to about 25 calls for service regarding chickens specifically. And those two primary reasons mentioned earlier were noise and the spell. In summary, the passage of House Bill 2062, mirroring state law state, staff would recommend no change to the ordinance, thereby only allowing six chickens. The recommendation is based on leading practice for animal welfare and to help with noise, disease, and odor concerns. Also with me is Manager Rodney Wagner, who is the go-to guy to answer all questions that you all might have. So he's available, as is Ms. Nassif, if there's questions specifically with any of the research. And then obviously from the police department, and we do run calls. We talk with the prosecutor's office to get a better understanding of the volume of what that is. It's not very measurable. We do have a single resident right now that has about five to seven outstanding cases with the court right now. So absent that, it's not overrunning our courts. So with that, I'll leave, leave the floor to you, Mayor, and...
Yeah, we've got questions. Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you. So did you guys consult anyone that's like an expert in chickens?
Rodney.
Oh, well, I don't know. I heard the last thing. I'd say that that's, well, okay. So I, I would propose that we increase the number to eight. My reason being, or even more, but in increments of four. But my reason being is because we have one commercial chicken seller in our city, and that is Tractor Supply. They sell minimum of four. So if you buy four your first year, which a lot of people do, they say, oh, I'll get four. You buy four your first year, they lay, I don't know, let's say an average of four to five years, if they're good. They live, backyard chickens, they live 10 years. So you have six years that they're not laying, but you can't get more chickens. You can't go to Tractor Supply and just buy two chickens. They won't sell them to you. So I propose we do at least eight, because we'll want to get another increment of four. So then you can go to Tractor Supply, which again is our only place that sells chickens in our city. And then that way you can buy four a year, you can stagger it, and then let's say they lay for four more years. You could stagger it and buy more and not have a period where you're just having backyard hens that they're too old and tough to have the meat, but you're consistently having laying chickens. So that's my proposal, but...
Thank you. Would you like to, can I give Councilmember Carlisle the floor to chime in? Councilmember Carlisle?
Thank you, Mayor. I really just have one question. When you were talking about 25 calls that you guys run, is that per year?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And then you said that we only have like one property owner that, that has outstanding issues, that it's not, it's just them. It's not really a citywide issue. It's just that one property owner that we're having issues with.
I'm going to let Manager Wagner speak to this because part of the reason we have just one repeat offender, if you will, is because of the way animal control operates. There's probably 25 to 30 residents in the city that we know of that are chicken owners. But there's regular patrols and oversight to a lot of these regulations so that we mitigate any concerns or calls for service from other neighbors. So, go ahead. Did I answer that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't want to even know. A while back, though, we had a gentleman contact us that he was excited we were going to discuss chickens, but he said, why can't we have ducks? So my question is, why can't we have ducks? They're cuter than chickens. They make less noise than chickens, and they have bigger eggs than chickens.
You want to speak to this?
Sure, I'll take a crack at it. Ducks don't make less noise than chickens.
Oh, I've had ducks and chickens, and I disagree.
I was just with him yesterday. But anyway, as far as the calls for service go, we don't keep track. We don't have a way to really track them. We have 25 to 40 a year, something like that. We probably have six or seven cases right now going through the court system. And the one citizen he was talking about is the one that's the most egregious right now. So when this, when we came in front of you guys in May, it was only supposed to be chickens going up by a certain amount. I think Councilmember Pryor said something about going to 12 or something like that. And ducks was never, what's that?
I said I would do 12.
Well, I think that's what you said at the time. But ducks was never introduced as part of the discussion at that point. And somehow between this, we've now gotten to ducks, and so...
Well, I think ducks is a great idea, so we can blame that on me. We'll just blame the ducks on me. I'll take it. I think they're cute. They waddle. They say quack-quack. It's adorable.
Definitely cuter than chickens. I'll give you that.
Yes, yes, okay.
But, so the, the thing with ducks is that they're just, how do I say this? They have a lot more feces than chickens do with, not to get gross, but it's just, it's just a mess.
Less than cows.
We don't want to talk about cows.
I'm just messing with you. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I was never in favor of bringing ducks in just because I know how much of a mess they are. And so when we, when we started this chicken ordinance back in 2012, it was actually pretty contentious between the city councilman at that time. And what we did is we just tried to find a, a middle ground with chickens where people could have chickens, and people that don't have chickens are okay with it. So that's where the number six came up. Ended up being industry standard before it was over. But it was, you want them to be able to have chickens with, next, next door to somebody who doesn't want chickens and still make them, you know, live in some kind of kumbaya there. And so that's, that's why if we came up with a six, it's probably the best program we've ever had. I mean, it's very successful. I know of at least 30 families with them that work good. Most of the contacts we have with them in the public is people who get the chickens, find out they're very expensive to start, and then they come out and they say, how about you take the chickens? We're done with them. And so we get to take chickens out of there. So, and that's very common. We just did that two days ago. So it's, I think, once people see how messy it is to deal with chickens, they just don't want to mess with them, you know, and then they just give them up, so.
All right. Okay, I have one more question. So the, if we can back up your, back to where you were talking about the six per two-tenths of an acre.
Talking about David.
That we're at, yeah. Okay, so I'm not assuming you guys are going to know this. Do we know the average lot size of a backyard? I'm assuming this two-tenths of an acre is just the back, or is this the whole lot?
So the, the way the ordinance reads now, these are only permissible in the back.
Right.
So...
But this two-tenths of an acre, is that just measuring the backyard? Is that what that measurement is?
My guess is it's the entire parcel.
Okay. So do we know the average size of a, is it about that?
Isn't it usually like .25, like quarter of an acre or something like that? Yeah.
We'll get the, instead of us guessing, we'll have Development Services.
Yeah, could you just tell me what the average size of a lot in Lee Summit is? A residential lot?
Yes. It's on my computer.
Okay.
Just a moment.
Seventy, a 70 by 40 lot would be 22, would be a .225.
Yeah.
Seventy by 140.
It's under 7,100. It's like 7,046. I literally just had the email today when I was cleaning stuff.
So 70,046. So if we wanted to do, you know, six per two-tenths of an acre, then we could say eight per whatever the next lot size up is. Or, you know, if we wanted to like stagger it based on the amount of space you have. Because the way I read this is it's industry standard because they need at least that much space. So if you can have six and two-tenths of an acre, then I would assume you could have a few more in a bigger lot, right?
I think it's important to study the research that we provided. They set the minimum acreage for a reason. A lot of these areas either, well, there's nothing below three acres that allows more than six. So, and in Kansas City, the restrictions are even tighter. As you'll see, it's a 100-foot setback from adjacent properties where ours is 40. So I would throw caution, same with the animal permitting, special permitting. There's a limited number of people in our city that do this. And Manager Wagner hit the nail on the head. It's not cheap to put these coops together that meet our standards for the well-being of the animals. We're just going to, we're going to put another fee on those people. So while it would allow us to track a better number, that doesn't mean everybody's going to report that to us either, so.
Right, absolutely.
Anyway, I just throw that out for more discussion.
Okay, thank you. I'm good, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it'd be fine to go to like eight chickens on a half acre, you know? If you had a little bit larger lot, I think a couple extra chickens probably doesn't hurt. I think if we have a, like it says on here, somebody says if you have a three-plus acre ag lot, I don't see why you shouldn't be able to have more than that, but I don't. I suspect it's a pretty small number of people that are impacted by this, but, I mean, if you're on a three-acre ag lot and you want to have 10 or 20 chickens, I don't see the issue there either. But I think it'd be nice to have like a tiered system based on the size of the properties that you don't try to cram too much onto a small lot. Thank you.
When we made the six chickens, the six chickens can go on any size lot. That's why it was truly called a backyard chicken program.
I understand. That's why I'm recommending a change to that.
Yeah, and then we also have the 400-foot rule in the ordinance, and that is anything farther than 400 feet, you can have as many as you want. You could have a hundred of them, and we wouldn't care at that point. And that's what we used to, that's what went by four as a 400-foot rule. And we made the six chickens to account for people having a smaller space and being able to have six chickens. So, so we got it covered for small and large, so.
So maybe the, the three-plus acres an issue because there are going to be a 400-foot plus lot that they could do what they want generally? I still think we could do the eight chickens on a half acre.
They do that generally for runoff of feces. Like if you get a good heavy downpour, that stuff is going to go in somebody else's yard, and probably somebody doesn't appreciate chickens, and then we get to go talk with them, so. them, so.
Councilmember Shields, you still have the floor.
I do, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Pryor?
I really like the proposal of eight chickens on a half an acre. Two chickens isn't really going to affect much. It's not going to really produce that much more feces. It's not going to produce that much more noise. But it will let the people that, like I said, purchase chickens at our only chicken wholesaler in our city, it will enable them to be able to purchase four chickens. And then four chickens when those four chickens stop laying. So I really like that proposal.
Well, Councilmember Shields does too, so let me hear from the other councilmembers. We got two options, we can, three options. Stick with six, go to eight on a half acre, or send this to CEDC and let them fight over this all over again.
Yes, send it back to them.
Let's do eight.
Eight?
Eight.
Eight on a half acre. I'm sorry, Deputy Chief, they're starting to create a consensus up here.
Sure.
Go ahead, sir.
You asked us to bring you the information, that's what we're doing. Appreciate the feedback. One piece we did leave out, while we're not trying to drive business out of Lee's Summit, you know, as close as Harrisonville, you can buy as little as two at a time. So there are opportunities to do that. Online is another opportunity. So, I understand the, I'm all about convenience myself, but, and I don't know other than Tractor Supply and locally who sells chickens, to be honest, so.
No, that's good. Councilmember Level?
So, what does us changing this do to more work for our staff, our police, and our, because I'm, we're up here...
That's a fair question.
Yeah. Is this a big deal to you guys for us to say it goes from six to eight? Does it create a lot of work? Because I feel like we're making accommodation for something we don't really have a strong opinion one way or the other.
Sure.
And I don't wanna add work or issues.
Yeah. Really, it's similar to how do we measure deterred crime? We don't, we can't. It's a guess, right? But we're gonna guess, will this extension of the ordinance be palatable to, let's, if there's 20 or 30 families that have chickens right now, the, all the rest, we're banking that they're gonna fall in line with, you know, this, this new ordinance. That's hard to guess on. So what, quantify that? Yeah, well, our calls for service should go up because of that. I can't tell you how much, though.
Administratively, though, like for staff, I mean, is this that big of a deal to increase it?
Negative, Mr. R.
All right, okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion. Well, what are we doing? What are we, yeah, this is just a presentation, but a motion could be made. Mr. Dunning?
If there's a, there could be a motion to direct staff to draft an ordinance to revise the ordinance, the current ordinance, to allow for eight chickens on minimum lot sizes of a half acre or greater, and then we could bring that back forward for consideration.
We're not gonna decide on ducks tonight. That's, there's not enough information to do that. We would have to send it back. So if you want to, direct staff to draw an ordinance to increase it by two to eight, that's, that's what I'm hearing around me on a half acre. So it does need to be a half acre, though. I'm pretty, you know, I'm pretty, I'm trying to be open on this because I grew up in rural Missouri, but I didn't have chickens. So I don't really know how dirty they are, but I do know how dirty my big German shepherd can be, and I can only imagine the, the drainage into other people's yards. So I do wanna be careful of that.
Would it be fair to bring back to the CEDC group, whichever group you designate, some options, maybe choices, instead of a single?
I think we need to bring it to council because they're just gonna push it to us to make a decision, Deputy Chief. So if you could bring us an ordinance raising it to eight...
Per half acre.
Per half acre, or modifying this, is that what I'm hearing from everyone?
Do you want me to make a motion, or are we good?
No, I think, I think we don't need a motion, do we? No, we just need a consensus.
Long as we have consensus, that way we're not...
There's consensus up here, sir. Need to bring it back to us, and if you run into a problem, let us know, but I think it'll probably pass if you bring that forward. I am glad it's not 12. That would be really tough.
Will do.
Not knowing enough about chickens, that is.
You and I both.
Me personally, okay.
Do you need it?
And I always thought ducks were mean. I know they're cute, but I thought they were mean.
Those are mean.
Okay.
Not ducks. They do.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, we, we did make it to the ordinances, not that that's gonna speed anything up. So, we are on proposed ordinances. Let's, let's just dive into it. Councilmember Carlisle, would you please read Bill Number 25-213?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move Bill Number 25-213, an ordinance authorizing the approval of a two-year contract with Britton Strategies for Leadership Development and Executive Coaching for Management Team in the amount not to exceed $274,300, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same by and on behalf of the Lee's, of Lee's Summit, Missouri. Be second read.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to move to second reading. Bill Number 25-213 by Councilmember Carlisle, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion, yes, Councilmember Rader?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to reiterate our discussion last week on this, and I did have a good conversation with Mr. Dunning on Monday. I am, I, I'm still not in favor of spending $274,000 on the coaching, but what I wanted to just suggest is that perhaps, I do believe that, I do believe in coaching, and I do believe in mentoring, and I do believe in leadership training. And what we kind of discussed was an alternative to that, and that is maybe, I looked up this Britton Strategies, and they seem like a very good company, and perhaps maybe we look at like a four-day training session where it's a little bit more experimental, but there can be some successes that are achieved at that time, and we can pinpoint a little bit more of what's happening to help Mr. Dunning with what he does and helping his, his, his people that he serves as well. And so, again, as I said, I, I won't be in favor of it, but I would like to maybe think about having an alternative so that they do get training and, but not quite as expensive as what we have. It's a big ask, so that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so she's not in favor, but she would consider other options. Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you. I think we've actually heard from quite a few people, or at least I have, from quite a few people after the proposal, not last week, I guess, two weeks ago regarding this. I think, I think leadership classes are important. I, too, would be in favor of maybe hearing a few other options before we vote on, on this one. But, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Pryor would like more options. Councilmember Carlisle?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just gonna say that I'm fully in support of this motion. I think that we have a great city manager, I think we would all agree. We have a great city manager, and he is a great leader, and he is asking us for the opportunity to give his executive staff leadership coaching and training. So I think if, if we were to say no to this, basically what we're saying is, Mr. Dunning, we see you and we think you're a great leader, and although we will hold you accountable come review time, we just don't think you need training, nor does your staff. And so I don't think that's quite fair for our city manager or our city staff. If we wanna continue to keep, attract great leaders to our city, then I think that we need to give them the education that they need to do that. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just second what Councilmember Carlisle said, similar to my comments a couple weeks ago, that these are the resources. Mr. Dunning says that he needs to perform the tasks that we've set for him, and if it's in his budget, I think I'm fine with approving it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dunning, I was thinking about this one ahead of, you know, the meeting, trying to think, you know, think this through, and I remember, did you show us a visual of this broken out over the three years? I thought I saw that.
I, so, since the last meeting, request for some additional information that I provided to us.
Did you send that to us as council?
Yes.
Okay, you sent it in an email, that's right.
Yes.
And that really helped, I mean, I was supportive of this the first time around, but then when you sent the fact that each fiscal year is only going to be, can you tell us what those are again?
Yes, I have that right here. So breaking this out based on the proposed approach and the phases, within this fiscal year, our current fiscal year, 118,905, and then if we continue through the program, $130,020 in the next fiscal year's budget, and then we wrap up with $25,375 in the fiscal year '28 budget. Now, having said all that, that's all in. There's optional services here for that executive coaching perspective. I would say this, as, as leaders of this organization, we've all had different levels of professional growth in coaching and things of that nature. So we all may need different levels of that coaching. Not all of us may need of, you know, the whole gamut. And so it's set up to be a not-to-exceed intentionally that way.
So, when we do other contracts, we, are there other times that we just think of it in a yearly way? And I'm, I'm just thinking through annual contracts. How do we present them in the ordinances?
Yeah, so those are set up, and this is out of transparency, right? To know that we need to make decisions based on if we're going for this whole program, just having that level of knowledge. Now, if, if, let's, let's just say this, Mayor, if it was like a decision to say, proceed down this path, then, then I, as the city manager, know I need to, when I prepare the fiscal year '27 budget, to incorporate that into the budget, and that comes forward in our annual budget presentations. That's the way we navigate through this.
Okay. I think that there were, this, this, just to give everyone perspective, this came out of which, which committee? Finance and Budget. It had support, but then when we got up here and we talked about it as, as a whole, points were brought up by councilmembers that said, "No, this isn't, this isn't, I'm not in support of this, this kind of spending, this type of thing." So, since I, we, we basically tabled it so that we could push it, and this is the best part, so that Councilmember Level could be here to be part of the, of the, of the discussion so that you would, see, usually I break the tie, but...
Were you thinking it's a tie?
It was a tie the other day. Well, kind of, yeah. So, in other words, as we vote this out, we can either vote, or we can send this, we can table this again and send this back and talk about other options. Mr. Dunning, you want, do you have other options?
Well, I would say at this point, given we've done an RFP for this scope of services, I think it would be proper to just take a vote, and if it, if it doesn't pass, that's the signal to me that I need to explore other options.
Okay, okay. That makes sense. Councilmember Level? No pressure.
You dogged me into it. So I did, I do remember this coming before Finance and Budget. I remember an aversion to reading it before it was actually presented to me, primarily for a lot of the reasons some of my colleagues have said. Now, I am also a big believer in coaching, and we've invested in stuff like that. Now, one of the things that, I'm not gonna, like, one of the things that made me more inclined to vote for it was how the funds were, were being procured for this. So it was coming out, it was, it was funds dedicated towards, maybe you can remind me that, that you were using and not using elsewhere. So they were in the budget for a role or something that...
Put it this way, Councilmember Level, don't need a budget increase in order to make this happen. We've realized some, what we budgeted for some other operational reviews and things. We've realized some savings. It's not just that, though. We have some salary savings. I'll find ways in the budget without sacrificing any of the other initiatives that we've got going on.
Right, so that made me more encouraged with it, and the fact that it was multiple years and a not-to-exceed. So it, like, it looked, so it was, now, I did mention in Finance and Budget, and I would hope, and part of the, me supporting it, was that there would be some sort of communication to us as to the training that was going on, how it was benefiting, any meaning, anything meaningful that you could share with us to let us know. That way, when year two comes around, if, like, hey, hey, we spent this money. Anyway, so that's, I'm in support of it based on those things from when it left Finance and Budget and came back up here. So, I don't know if we can have those assurances or what that looks like or what those deliverables, but it was saying, hey, if we're gonna put these monies there, like, I'd like to see a report or something of what, what has been borne out of this for staff and leadership.
Very similarly, I'm not, Councilmember Hodges, I'm gonna come right to you, but I was just gonna say, I was also, was supportive last time, but I was like, "Mr. Dunning, we need some type of assurance that everybody's got full buy-in on this and take, because you know coaching, taking advantage of the coaching that's being presented or being offered to them, and, you know, having real skin in the game type of thing." So, it's, it is a leap of faith, but if there's a way to, for you to report back to us, we could incorporate that type of thing for an accountability, accountability measure back to us. Okay. Councilmember Level, are you done?
Yes.
Councilmember Hodges?
Oh, I was just gonna say real quick, I know I said quite a bit last time, two weeks ago, but I'm, I mean, I'm still in the same spot. I, I think maybe if it was something geared that was more towards just Mr. Dunning, because he is the leader at the top of all the staff, and who he is and what he brings to the table is what should be trickling down to everybody else. But it, it can't be a number that looks like that, because again, all I keep thinking is, yeah, it might be coming out of some different fund that we don't have to adjust the budget, but it's still taxpayer dollars at the end of the day, and we have to be responsible with that. And I just don't feel like this is the best use for money like this. But again, if it's something where Mr. Dunning's just going and he's soaking up all the wisdom or whatever, and he's able to pass it down and create an environment where it's like, hey, here's what I learned, here's what I can pass down, and create more opportunities to bond with his own staff, I think that would be a better opportunity and more wise use of our money, but I just cannot stomach this. I don't care if it's over 10 years, I just think it's money that should be going to the citizens of whose money it actually is. So, I'm still in awe. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I call a vote, anybody?
It's just 15 people, it's training, right?
Yes, it is 15 people. Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you. Sorry, I don't remember, and I was asking, Councilmember Funk, I don't remember, I don't think I saw which 15 people in the city get the training.
Our management team. So, city manager, I'd be a participant, not the facilitator, our assistant city managers, fire chief, police chief, all department directors. Top, we call that our management team, our leadership team.
That's what I kinda figured, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
All right. I think I'm just gonna call for the vote and see how this lands. So, please cast your vote. And please record the vote. It goes down, 5-4. Okay.
All right, we got three minutes to read the rest of these.
Three minutes. Are you gonna hold us to that?
Oh, yeah, I am.
We gotta get to the last one.
Oh.
Yes, because, okay, good. All right. I need, I need, I'm gonna let Mayor Potam do this.
Okay, go.
I'll be right back.
Yeah, go for it.
All right. Ready?
You will.
Yeah.
Yeah, go for it.
All right.
You will. Yeah, go for it.
I move for second reading of bill number 25-225, an ordinance approving the use of a cooperative contract between the Houston Galveston area council, HGA CBI, and roadway asset services LLC, contract number HP08-25, for the evaluation services for the city of Lee Summit roadway system and street signage, and authorizing city manager to execute the same for the city.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Shields and a second by Councilmember Carlisle. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Is that what she's supposed to do? I think they just mark them away. There you go.
Got them. Okay. That moves to, for adoption. Thank you. Councilmember?
Thank you. I now move for adoption of bill number 25-225, an ordinance approving the use of cooperative contract between the Houston Galveston area council, HGA CBI, and roadway asset services LLC, contract number HP08-25, for the evaluation services for the city of Lee Summit roadway system and street signage, and authorizing city manager to execute the same for the city.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Shields and a second by Councilmember Carlisle for adoption of bill number 25-225. All those in favor, please indicate, or please cast your vote. Okay, all votes are in. For the record, we have seven votes with two people out. Yes. This motion passes. Thank you.
All right, next one.
Yeah, go for it. Next one.
I move for second reading of bill number 25-226, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number 599 for the Ward Road improvements, phase one, northwest Blue Parkway to northwest O'Brien Road for the VF Anderson Builders, in the amount of $4,913,531.5 and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Shields, second by Councilmember Carlisle for bill number 25-226. Any questions, comments? Not, please cast your vote.
I think Councilmember Pryor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Pryor, go for it.
Thank you. No, I just wanted to say, I know we have been getting a lot of emails about roads, all the roads in our city being shut down at the same time. So, I just wanted to say that Mr. Park said that I believe this project isn't going to start until, not yet, anyway. It's going to be after the first of the year.
Councilmember Pryor, that's correct. We wouldn't anticipate really much of this work to begin until you get into the next year and it's construction season. You might see some of the utility work, a little bit of staging and mobilization occurring over winter, but no real disruption occurring.
Okay, thank you.
Did you call for the vote?
We did.
Oh, did you vote?
Yep.
All right. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It does move to second reading. Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you. I now move for adoption of bill number 25-226, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number 599 for the Ward Road improvements, phase one, northwest Blue Parkway to northwest O'Brien Road for the VF Anderson Builders, in the amount of $4,913,531.5 and authorizing city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt bill number 25-226 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion. Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember Shields, bill number 25-227, please.
Thank you. I move for second reading of bill number 25-227, an ordinance approving the award of bid number 2026-011 for the purchase of asphalt based and surface materials for an initial term of one year with up to four one-year renewals to Vance Brothers, Inc., and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 25-227 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It goes to second reading unanimously. Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you. I move for adoption of bill number 25-227, an ordinance approving the award of bid number 2026-011 for the purchase of asphalt based and surface materials for an initial term of one year with up to four one-year renewals to Vance Brothers, Inc., and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt bill number 25-227 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion. Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. That bill is adopted unanimously. Councilmember Shields, would you please read bill number 25-228?
Thank you. I move for second reading of bill number 25-228, an ordinance approving change to order number five to the agreement with Tandem Paving Company, Inc., for the mill and overlay FY26 program, project number 887-OV, to increase the project timeline by 20 days and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 25-228 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It's adopted, it's second reading unanimously. Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you. I now move for adoption of bill number 25-228, an ordinance approving change to order number five to the agreement with Tandem Paving Company, Inc., for the mill and overlay FY26 program, project number 887-OV, to increase the project timeline by 20 days and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. A motion to adopt bill number 25-228 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion. Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. That bill is adopted unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember Shields, would you please read bill number 25-229?
Thank you. I move for second reading of bill number 25-229, an ordinance approving the award of RFQ number 2025-50 between the city of Lee Summit, Missouri and Bartlett and West for the designing and construction of a welcome monument to be located at the intersection of M291 Highway and M150 Highway.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 25-229 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. On this one, before I call for discussion, Mr. Dunning, Sean Marshall is our graduate fellow.
That's correct, Mayor.
Yeah. Sean Marshall, you want to come forward, sir? You've been working on this, and you've got your designation.
Yeah, good evening. Sean Marshall, graduate fellow. Given the late hour, I can just provide you with kind of a bit of context. So, you guys had approved an agreement between the IDA and the city for funding, and this is just the award of the contract between Bartlett and West and the city moving this project forward. So, they'll come, if it's approved, the next steps are they'll come provide a design charrette on December 10th here at City Hall. We invite the public, we'd invite council, the IDA, anyone who'd like to share their thoughts. They go create a design, three to five designs, we'd present to the IDA, and then we'd bring three to five designs to you for review. You'd approve a design, and then we'd move forward with the construction with Bartlett and West. That's kind of the long and short of it. You know, I could go through a full presentation if you'd like, but...
No, no. We know what this is for. We just wanted to, I know you've been working on this, and we're going to come up with a new design on this. I want to make sure everybody kind of knew that that was happening as well. And just appreciate your hard work on it.
Yeah, thank you. And there was some feedback, I know, from the IDA, as well as a few members from Public Works regarding the older monument designs. And so, I just wanted to remind the full body that that will be in consideration at that design charrette. So, if people do like the older designs, we can kind of incorporate some of those facets.
Oh, okay. Yeah, incorporating the similar features and such. Yep. Okay. Councilmember Raider?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, that was good. And then you said we're coming together on this December the 10th?
Yep. December the 10th will be the design charrette. And then, I mean, we anticipate maybe mid to late January, they'd be ready with three to five designs. That will then come before council.
Okay. So, is that when the open meeting is, then, on the 10th, or?
Correct.
Okay. And it's here?
You mean open meeting as in, yeah, not a council meeting.
Yeah, not a council meeting, where you have, you have community participation and whoever wants to come.
Correct.
Here at City Hall?
Here at City Hall. I believe, right now, we're looking at doing maybe four to seven or so.
Okay.
And Bartlett and West would be present as well. So, they can provide some additional context.
Thank you, Mayor.
Of course. All right. Thank you again.
Yep.
All right. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It does move to second reading unanimously. Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you. I now move for adoption of bill number 25-229, an ordinance approving the award of RFQ number 2025-50 between the city of Lee Summit, Missouri and Bartlett and West for the designing and construction of a welcome monument to be located at the intersection of M291 Highway and M150 Highway.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt bill number 25-229 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion. Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Oh, no, no. One more. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously. Thank you. And then, on this next, this last one, if we were to consider, I know what's going on. This last one is about the ordinance exempting the city of Lee Summit with regard to the extension of the hours for the liquor licenses. We, we've been discussing this one. I know everybody's kind of stressed over it a little bit, because we want to make sure we make a good decision. And we even have some people from the Summit Hospitality Group, the restaurant bars, and the organizations that, I think we should consider having Major Walters engage with them. And we don't have to decide on this tonight. I know that in a few weeks, what's the date that the, December 5th?
December 5th.
December 5th is when the days, you can come forward, Major, because I want to ask you, December 5th is when the games get, the dates and the, and the draw happens. Sorry, I'm getting tired. And, Major Walters, I know that we have discussed this, and we can make a decision, but we also really don't have to tonight. And I know you've been here really late, staying here for us. But I would like to see if council would be okay with tabling this, continuing, and then having you engage with some, or maybe some type of engagement, not just you, but also others, with some of our restaurants and bar owners and, what's that, the chamber, the Visitors Bureau, and others.
Absolutely.
Would you be open to that and meeting with them?
Yes.
Okay, let me talk to council about that first, see if they have questions for you. Is this something that council would be okay with? More information. Okay. 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 So, again, I know that this could be a decision, but do I need to do anything with this, Mr. Ed? Table it, read it, read it and table it?
Yes, Mayor, since it's on the agenda, I'd recommend that you read it and table it to a date certain.
Yeah. Major Walters, December 9th is our next meeting. No, December 2nd is our next meeting. December 9th, we have a meeting, I believe. Mr. Dunning?
Yes, December 9th is a big, heavy agenda.
Oh, yeah. December 16th.
I'd probably go for the 16th.
Yeah, December 9th, not December 9th.
I think that I would agree with December 16th as well, just because we'd have the opportunity to see what happens on December the 5th.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, make a motion, please. Councilmember Shields, thank you.
I move to table to a date certain of December 16th, 2025, bill number 25-230, an ordinance exempting the city of Lee Summit, Missouri from the provisions of section 311.2026, otherwise Missouri statutes regarding the extension of hours for liquor licenses to sell, serve, and allow the consumption of alcoholic beverages during the 2026 FIFA World Cup tournament.
Thank you. We have a motion, oh, I need a second. I have one. We need, we have a motion to table 25-230 to December 16th by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. This is the vote to table. Yep. All votes are in. Please record the vote. This is going to be tabled until December 16th. Thank you all. And then, we have one more to read. Councilmember Shields, bill number 25-231, first reading.
Yep. Thank you. I move for second reading of bill number 25-231, an ordinance approving the real estate sale agreement between the city of Lee Summit, Missouri and Summit DC Real Estate Holdings LLC for the sale of land located at 420 Southeast Thompson Drive.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 25-231 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Funk. Discussion. Seeing none. Oh, yes, Councilmember Pryor.
I am so sorry, but can we get like just a small, little, tiny bit of information on it? I know. That's why I feel like we kind of need to ask him this question, because he's here.
Good evening, David Buschak, Chief Counsel of Economic Development and Planning. So, if you go south on 291 South and turn on Thompson Drive, encircle around to the Midstates property, north of the, on the north side of the Midstates property is the strip of land. It's the northern 50-foot of that lot, stretches 1,234 feet across. And this will be the sale of that parcel to that entity.
Thank you. I remember talking about this, but I just wanted to, yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It does move to second reading unanimously. Thank you. Committee reports. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. Since we don't have an inter-reading meeting, we have Finance and Budget Committee on December the 1st. And then, I also wanted to mention that LSCDC, at our most recent meeting, adopted the strategic plan. So, that's a major milestone for that organization. And then, we also had a great quarterly luncheon this week with a panel about workforce development. So, they're doing good work.
I thought it was really good. Yeah, I thought it was really good. Thank you. Any other committee reports? Council comments?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you. Staff roundtable?
Thank you, Mayor. Three quick items. I know mayor's tree lighting was mentioned earlier, so that's at 6:30 PM is when the lights come on. So, I just wanted to mention the time there. Tomorrow, we'll be cutting the ribbon on Third Street. That was mentioned, that it's at 2:00 PM. Just for awareness, I think the section of Third Street between Jefferson and Madison is kind of that area where I think that ribbon cutting will take place, just for awareness. And then, this will be the last council meeting for one of our familiar faces, and she's here tonight. And I'll let Ryan Elam kind of share that information. There he is. Okay?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, it is with mixed feelings that I wanted to inform everybody that this is Ms. Amy Nassif's last city council meeting with us. I wanted to extend a very heartfelt thank you to her for two years and eight months or so of service in various roles. She's had a big impact on the organization during the time here, and I'm very thankful and very grateful to that. And I wanted to wish her well in her next endeavor as she jumped ship and has a great opportunity to do some really good work across the state in a lot of different things. And if you wanted to say a few things or anything to the council, then, but I did want to say thank you publicly.
My foot's asleep, so I'm sorry. I got a microphone for a second. I'm going to do this. Thank you. Hello. Good evening, Amy Nassif, Deputy Director. Yes, thank you. I didn't know this was going to happen. It feels like I just got here. It's been awesome, awesome fun. Thank you all. Thank you for listening to me every single week about housing, too. But with all your support, we've been able to get, I think, two dozen, like, code updates done and implementing our Ignite Plan, and changing some of our policies and our procedures on our permit reviews, like, just so much. So, and we couldn't do that without, without you all listening to us, week after week, on all those items and your support and your guidance on that. But yes, I got just a wonderful, unexpected opportunity to be principal at a local consulting firm, doing planning work across the state and across Midwest and region, too. So, hopefully, we'll see you around sometime in the future. But thank you very much for having me. It's been a blessing and been awesome to be here with you all. So, thank you.
Thank you. No one will be able to keep up with you when it comes to the breakout groups and the fun trivia games and the retreats. So, thanks for all that you've done for us. Councilmember Pryor?
I was just going to say, I'm going to need to know exactly where you live, because I'm going to be showing up at your house, because I'm going to miss you. I like you being at our CDC meetings. So...
I'll send you my contact info, because you can hire me as a consultant.
I know. Yeah. But I've enjoyed having you at the city, so thank you.
All right. All right. Is that it, Mr. Dunning?
Happy Thanksgiving, yep, that's it.
Okay, um, yes. This meeting is adjourned at 11:17.